Okay, so I am calling this meeting to order. And at this time, I'm going to ask all to rise. We have Reverend Pamela Dykhouse from First United Methodist Church on Shoreline Boulevard here for our invocation. Reverend, welcome. Please remain standing as we will follow the invocation with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and Texas flags.
Let us pray. Oh God, ruler of all nations, we pray today for Nuasis County, its leaders and its people. We pray that Judge Canales and our commissioners may be humble in spirit, clear in judgment, and able to understand the issues that face them. May they think often of the people on whose behalf they must speak and act. May they not take for granted the authority which the citizens of our county have entrusted to them. Whether they are dealing with mundane matters of maintenance, management, and safety, or with hot-button media-making topics, we pray that your wisdom will guide their actions and that they not be swayed by the heat of the moment or the desire for popularity. We thank you, God, for the willingness of the members of this court and all of our public officials to serve for the good of the community. Grant them humility and perseverance, as well as a sense of fulfillment and reward in their work. Holy One, keep these leaders and all of us ever mindful of the least among us, people who live in our county's parks and on the streets and beaches, the working poor, the old and infirm, those with mental health problems, children without loving parents or guardians, people who are jobless, and those with insufficient healthcare. We thank you for our beautiful county, its precious resources of land and sea and air, and its beautifully diverse and capable people. Thank you, God, for this time of good opportunities for our region, and thank you for the work of our Commissioners' Court. Thank you for the opportunities they have to make a positive difference for us all. May we continue to work together across all walks of life in this county to live honorably and peaceably with one another, to the glory of God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Reverend, thank you so much for being here. If you have that written, that was a beautiful invocation, I would love to get a copy. Thank you so much. At this time, I will call the time at 9:04 a.m., and I will note that this is the October 30th, 2019. We are on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse at 901 Leopard. And I do certify, Madam Clerk, that all commissioners and myself, of course, are present, and we do have a quorum. I will call on Timothy for our safety briefing at this time.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Ma'am. We are meeting today on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners' courtroom past the Information Technology Office. A fire extinguisher is located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom next to the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 today are Tyner and Edward. Participants who are certified for conducting CPR in the event is Deputy Vasquez. In case evacuation, he gress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the pond side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need for shelter in place, we will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. Our shared topics today are daylight savings and its effects. That concludes my safety brief.
Thank you so much. At this time, I've got note that the court minutes of October 16th, 2019 are next on the agenda, and I'd look for a motion, please, at this time, for their approval.
Second.
Thank you. You know, I skipped E., but let me give the announcement, at least for the audience and those at home watching. At 11:30 a.m., we will have an unveiling of the Courts of Excellence downstairs in front, on Floor 1, in front of the central jury room. That will necessitate a recess of this Commissioners' Court, and I will recess, if you all will please help me, around the 11:25 hour, okay? And this is an important moment to celebrate, that we have multiple courts in Nuasis County that have received this distinction of honor, and by placing it prominently in front of our jury room, we tell all citizens that Nuasis County values excellence, and indeed, many of our courts have achieved this status. Moving on to G., we have some resolutions, proclamations, that are very important. Yes, ma'am?
Judge, you need to vote.
On the minutes. Sorry, I've skipped back. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, thanks. We'll move on to the resolution. You did have a motion and a second, correct? You recorded? Thank you. National Radiologic Week, November 3rd through the 8th.
I believe there's a lot of folks here for this, Judge.
How wonderful. Would you all like to stand and be recognized by Tyner? And he's going to read a... Is it a resolution?
Yes, Judge.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation recognizing National Radiologic Technology Week. Whereas the health of our citizens is a major concern and responsibility of healthcare professionals serving the citizens of Nuasis County, whereas qualified practitioners who specialize in the use of medical radiation and imaging technology to aid in the diagnosis and treatment of disease share a commitment to bring the people of this community a safer, more compassionate environment now and in the future. Whereas professionals in the radiologic sciences are dedicated to the highest standard of professionalism and continually maintain those standards through education, lifelong learning, credentialing, and personal commitment. Whereas November 3rd through 9th, 2019, has been designated National Radiologic Technology Week to focus on the safe medical radiation environment provided through the skilled and conscientious efforts of radiologic technologists. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County hereby proclaims November 3rd through 9th, 2019, Radiologic Technology Week in Nuasis County, and urges all of our citizens to recognize this event and participate in its observance.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Ida.
And we're here this morning because we applied for a grant back in May, and this grant was giving us the opportunity to be able to provide additional services to Nuasis County. And in September, we did receive the grant, and this will enable us to receive $2,000 grant for funding to be able to purchase American Society of Radiology Technologists books and educational materials. And we have partnered with the group of Delmar College and the associates that are here with us, and we are going to continue for the whole month plus up until January and February to have programs, and they will be coming to library to also have some speaking engagements.
That's fantastic. What a great partnership between Nuasis County Libraries, grants, and healthcare professionals in our community. This is exactly how it's supposed to work, and we congratulate you on an important month. Would you like to make some comments and introduce your team here?
Sure. My name is Jessica Martinez. I'm with Radiology Associates. My coworkers and I, like I said, represent Radiology Associates. We're honored to be here today to be up here with the Nuasis County Libraries and future RadTex with Delmar College. It's because of organizations like this, like the Nuasis County Library, and with the American Society of Radiologic Technologists, that we can promote our profession. You know, we can educate not only students, but the community in the importance of medical imaging and its advances. We definitely were proud of our profession. You know, we love to promote it, and, you know, we couldn't thank them for teaming up with us. And, you know, we have x-ray visions, so we have superpowers.
I love that. That's a great tagline.
So, you know, we're honored today to be accepting this with the radiology students from Delmar because we are their mentors and they are our future.
Right. It's very exciting, and I know, not to put him on the spot, but we have here with us in the audience, CEO of Christis Spawn, Dr. Osbert Blow. I know he would agree with you that the technology... Yeah. On behalf of all healthcare providers, but a CAT scan saved my daughter's life, whether it's a CAT scan, an MRI, a MEG, a MAG, or a PET scan, these are the tools of modern technology, and we're so grateful that the technicians that know how to handle them help save lives every day and help create opportunities for lives to be lengthened because of early detection. So congratulations. We would love to take a picture with you. We have a special resolution. I just have to find it here.
Move passage, Judge.
And need a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I have it right here. Thank you. You know, we'll... Yes, that's fine.
Will they fit up here?
Yeah. We'll work out. I'm just going to move the chair.
It's almost used. We should have one. Sure. Good morning. Thank you, Ida, for doing that grant. Congratulations. This is so nice. Yep, Commissioner wants to shake your hand here. Welcome, everybody. Come on, come on, come on. He doesn't bite. This is great. Tell me about the doughnut that roared. Oh my gosh, that's so great. I need that book. Okay, and Tyner, you've got it? I guess look straight ahead.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, fine. I don't know why it says that.
Thank you.
So they didn't get to tell you, but they've got some children's books that really highlight what Ms. Ida was saying, and one of them was called "The Doughnut That Roared." And for any of you who've ever been in an MRI machine, it does feel like it's roaring in there, and the children have to be so very still for over 45 minutes. And any cause of movement could cause the results to not be effective, and so therefore sedation is sometimes needed, which has its own issue. So I think that this is an awesome opportunity to get children comfortable with some of the techniques. So how innovative, Ms. Ida. How wonderful. Let's move along to the next presentation, which is November 2019 Employee of the Month. And I'm wondering, it's... Tyner, do you have something for me? No?
Should be up there, Judge.
It's in her book. It's in her book. Are you sure? In here? Yeah, but I'm looking for the paperwork. It's there, too. I don't see it. I'm going to skip it for right now till we can locate it. Yes, I got it. I'm so sorry. It's here. It's here. It's here. Well, clearly, the glasses are not clean. I'm having trouble seeing what's right in front of my eyes.
One step at a time.
One step at a time this morning.
At least you've got the glasses.
This morning, we continue the progress of valuing and recognizing special people that have been nominated by their department heads. And for November 2019, the recognition of outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service, he comes to us from IT, and I'd ask that... There you are, Lance. If you don't mind, come on, at least to the front of the podium and get ready. And let me talk a little bit about this special person who you say went above and beyond in restoring critical technology operations for the juvenile staff after we had a very serious system-wide outage. He worked diligently in assisting juvenile employees to get access to their computers and resources they needed to perform their job functions. He took initiative, remained dedicated, and maintained incredibly strong work ethic in responding to this crisis. By going above and beyond the call of duty, it is my pleasure to highly recommend this employee to receive the distinction of Employee of the Month. And that special person, who all of us might have recognized from time after time, when you have a crisis, he winds up in your office, see you enough, thank goodness, because crises are not a commonplace, but when they do happen, everything that you touch affects the entire system. So Alex Mendez, you are Employee of the Month. We're so happy and proud that you have just really created this level of excellence within the information technology, and we want to recognize you. And we're going to let your boss say something nice about you.
Yeah, I didn't even know he had a suit. Anyway, no, he's been a great employee, and when we had that situation at juvenile, he was on the front lines. We had a lot of people working on that situation and a lot of people covering bases here, but he was on the front lines and definitely exceeded the general call of duty for IT in a very high-pressure situation. So I don't know if he wants to say anything, but thank you.
Alex, we just want to tell you that we have a lovely certificate here for you, and I look forward to visiting with you over lunch. I've really enjoyed the lunches that I've had with the Employee of the Month. It gets us a chance to get to know one another in a different way than "Come help me fix something." And of course, they have a nice parking spot, but I just want to commend all the department heads. Keep them coming. I absolutely love that you are recognizing people within your departments that are doing outstanding work. We value each and every one of them, and while I don't give a certificate every month to all that you send, make no mistake, I take a mental note, and when I can, I try to go up and say thank you to the people that you're recommending because this teamwork and this family that we're creating is helping people get the services they need out in the county. So Alex, come and let us shake your hand and say thanks and give you this certificate.
Jag says this will maybe the only time we see you in a suit. You're real sharp. Real sharp. And this is it. Here. So I'll let you kind of hold it. Thank you. I look forward to having lunch. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move on to letter I, and we have board appointments, and we're going to have multiples, actually, 1 through 5. And the first one that I'm going to announce is the Nuasis County Hospital District Board of Managers. I have three positions that are available at this time, and I'm going to start the nomination of one individual, and his name is Daniel Dane. And I'm going to ask that I prepare that... Well, that's a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, opposed, same sign. Abstentions?
My name is Brower.
Okay, I've got a nomination for Pamela Brower.
Second.
I have a motion and multiple seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. I have... Do I have a third nomination?
I'm Mary Aron.
I'm John Valls.
Okay. I've got a motion for John Valls. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? A motion and a second for John Valls? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay. I have received, I believe, Madam Clerk, a majority for three individuals, and we only have three spots on this board. And I noticed that we had, at least at one moment... Yes, Johnny Hip, you're here. You now have a full board, sir. I know that that probably brings you some relief.
I'm fine.
I'm sorry?
Four, well, it's not three.
I'm so sorry. Forgive me. Forgive me.
And then Judge, are we going to put Mr. Valls back, I guess, in his...
Yeah, I do want to clarify, John Valls was taken off the board because of a rule that exists in statute when he was also elected in the position for London Independent School District because of his resignation from that board and because there has been a replacement or, let's call it, a reappointment, and that person has been sworn in in that duly-elected position. He is now eligible for reappointment. This will allow Mr. Valls to continue to finish his service. He was reappointed... I'm sorry. Yes, he was reappointed by the previous court, and so I believe this will allow him to have a little over a year, two years, in the completion of that three-year term. So, does that clarify? In other words, the term is a...
What are the terms of the other two?
Three years.
Two, two, and one, that are left on their terms.
Which is... I didn't... I should have asked that before we started.
Valls and Daniel positions, so Valls gets placed back in his old spot. Someone needs to fill Mr. Daniel's position who resigned. He had two years left on his spot as well. And then Van Huesman had one year left, and so that we need to place someone in that who will be up for reappointment next year.
Judge, I would suggest we put Dane in the spot for two years and Brower in the spot for one.
Okay. That's... Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign.
I don't know if we have a policy, if we just run it however... You know, I'm thinking back to last time that we did the hospital board, and by the way, I supported all three of these appointments today. So this is not about them. It's about the process. I think the last time, you know, I made a motion that, you know, in retrospect, it probably wasn't fair. We had a group that we were happy with, but didn't give everybody a chance to vote. And I hate that if we don't care for someone who's nominated, you know, I hate that we have to vote no, you know, that we give a name. I think that we should just have... There's three vacancies. We each have three votes. We throw up whoever we nominate, and then that's how the votes go, so that we don't have to say no against someone. I mean, I know we all have our reasons why we support or don't, but, you know, I don't want someone who's willing to put their name up to be placed on a citizen advisory board or commissioner, what have you, put their name up there and then have any of us say no. And that's not because Commissioner Vaughn said no, that I've had to say no on certain votes before when we've had certain names nominated for different positions. So I don't know if it's something that we can look at. I would love to see if it's something... Because I'll tell you, my experience I've had on previous elected positions is, you know, we just come up with a slate, and we make a nomination. So not everybody makes that cut who's applied, but at least then we have two or three votes and it was done on council, and some of us are familiar with that process. I know when we had board appointments, CCISD, we did the same thing. And so here at the county, it's always been a little different. And so if that's how... If we have a policy that says that, then, okay, we can work with that. I just think I'd like an opportunity, one, that we all can vote, two, that we avoid any future slate votes. That just because there's votes that can make it done doesn't mean that we... That everyone has to take it or like it, because I know some of the commissioners before didn't vote for what was put out there in the nomination, and they could have wholeheartedly supported others, right? And so this today just kind of brings that to mind, that if we can look at the policy or our procedures, I would appreciate if the court would entertain that as a whole to let us vote whoever's nominated, and then we don't have to vote. You know, if there's candidates A through D, and we're only having to pick three of them, well, then we can pick A, B, and D, and we don't have to say, "C, I don't want you. C, no, I'm opposed to you." Because once again, these are people who are putting their names up to serve in a position that's not paid, no glory. They do a lot of the hard work for us, and to have us put a slate... I don't want to say "put a slate" together, because that's not what happened, but that's, in essence, what happened the last time. And so in that retrospect, I've just... I've been thinking about that a long time. So this is an opportunity just to bring it up, for us to entertain in the future. I'm not saying we have to talk about it soon, but just, you know, we have other big appointments coming, and I don't know if we'll have any appointments that have this many positions appointed within a short period of time, like we've done with the hospital board, but if we can just consider that next go-around, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I think some of the concepts that we've come up with to strengthen our boards and commissions that Margaret kind of took the lead on as far as understanding that our online process was not as strong as it could be, and we made decisions to strengthen that. We've also talked about term limits. We've also had other discussions about how can we make boards and commissions, you know, how can we strengthen the process? So anything that strengthens the process, I'm in favor of. I follow Robert's Rules of Order. I think it's the best little old book around, and it typically guides you, and that's kind of how I took today. I do want to highlight what you said in that we appreciate truly all of the applicants. Willingness to serve is the definition of, in my opinion, what it means to really love one another enough to be able to come out and say you want to build a better community. Everybody that does wish to serve, I hope, will find an opportunity to serve in the very near future if they did not get selected today. Leadership is something that we seek here, particularly in a diverse background. So I'm with you in strengthening the process. I like the way that we are creating a resume on online applications. It's so much better than it was before, and I'm happy to have... I don't think we've ever finished our Boards and Commissions workshop, have we?
Judge, if I could add, I appreciate Commissioner Mahrez's proclamation on that, and I wholeheartedly agree, and I appreciate that he is considering that. And I think, I mean, I'm happy to put something on the agenda or we can get somebody to put it on the agenda, but I seriously, I could have voted for any of these people that were nominated today, and we had some outstanding applicants, and I know that's easy to say after you don't do it, but we don't always have this level of quality applicants, and we certainly did today. But I agree with Commissioner Mahrez, and if you want to put it on the agenda, John, or I can, or whatever, but I think it's a simple policy, you know, discussion that just says, "This is how we're going to do board appointments going forward until the court changes the way we do it." And Laura, is there any reason we can't put that on as just a policy to pass? And like I said, John, if you want to put that on the agenda, or if you want someone else to...
I mean, I just threw it out there. I hadn't...
No, I think it's...
...idea with the judge, so definitely want to talk with her as far as what works best for us, but, I mean, just like I said, I mean, it was no ill-intent the last time. It just happened. I mean, there was no plan to it or anything. It just kind of, we saw three candidates and said, "Put their names together and vote it up or down." And then, like I said, it doesn't give us a chance just to say, "Here are our three out of the five or 10," or however many applied, so...
Well, and again, I think you...
Just for further discussion in the future, we can talk about it.
Well, I think you... I mean, I think the last... And I would since... Yeah, and I appreciate that since I made the point last time of having a hard time with doing the slate, because I think that that is uncomfortable. There were people on that slate I would have liked to have voted for individually. There were people on the existing board I would have liked to have had a chance to vote for, so I appreciate that, and I think we should at least have a discussion with it, and I don't think voting... The slate makes it uncomfortable, because I had to vote no just because I didn't think the slate... I didn't like the concept of the slate. I love the people you all appointed. I just didn't like the concept of the slate, and that was my, as you said, my protest vote. Yes, we have to make those sometimes, so...
So I'll work with Lauda, and we will work to strengthen the process so that we can bring that back to the court. Let me move on, but let me not move on too fast. I would like to at least highlight for the audience and for those listening at home the excellent choices, I think, that we just made, and that is, is that Ms. Brower is a CPA certified by the state of Texas. She holds also a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting. She's the former Corporate Director of Revenue for the Sisters of Mercy Health System. She's also worked at the Christis Spawn Health System as one of their CFO there, and her professional affiliations are vast, including with MHID in current, as her current role there on the board. In addition, I'd be here all day if I really went into the resume. In addition, I'd be here all day if I really went into the resumes. But the other, the other person, of course, is Daniel Dane, who sits on the, I believe, I think it's the Corpus Christi, we call it a different name now, but I know it is the old CVVB, Corpus Christi Visitors Convention and Visitors Bureau, but now it has a new name, Ian. It's Visit Corpus Christi. And he's also on the National Board of the Domino's National Franchise Association. He's always represented small business very well. He's on the Domino's Forum Board. I guess this is not a, this is a big clue. He owns all the Domino's. So thank him on Sunday for Game Day. And he represents the Northwest area of our community. In addition, John Valls has been serving the hospital district for over six years. He's also on the Type A Board, he's served on the Appraisal District Board and the RTA Board, and is passionate also about behavioral health and has been leading that effort. So I'm really pleased about all the applicants, and I thank you for a complete clarification of the terms. You will receive a letter from the court outlining these terms. And I would like very much to encourage you to please visit with Director Hip, as he's in the audience today. Thank you so much. I'm gonna move on to our next appointment, which is equally, they're all important. At this time, we have an appointment to the Nueces County Animal Control Advisory Committee. And I am looking for a presentation at this time. We have three. Do you want to, do you want to unveil it, Tyner?
Animal Control Advisory.
Yes, we have a resignation, as I understand it.
Yeah, there's a resignation of Maria Ovay. You do have a letter of interest from Nina Acuna.
But only one application, is that correct?
And one new applicant, Sherry King.
Okay. There's multiple, but I only have one application at this time, Commissioners.
It's two, a letter of interest for Nina Acuna and applicant Sherry King.
Okay. But did she fill out the application?
Nina didn't have...
Yes.
She doesn't have to. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So in this case, do I have a motion to accept the application of Sherry King? And a second? Okay, we're happy, I've got a motion, a second, we can discuss now.
The letter of interest, I don't mind...
I'm sorry, Sherry's is an application, though. We're doing Sherry.
One of them has a letter of interest, right? Okay, so I mean, if they have a letter of interest, it means they made an effort to submit a letter. So why don't we just both of them, let them fill out an application?
Well, it's been a policy of the court that if they were an incumbent and previously had already filled out an application, that they need only submit a letter of interest, instead of filling out an application again.
I think he agrees with you. You want her to be considered, is that correct? She will be. But at this moment, I have a motion for Ms. King and a second. Do I have, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign? And now, I've got a motion to receive Nina Acuna's letter of interest to reinstate her on the board? And do I need a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign? Okay, so we have the, the reappointment of Nina Acuna and Ms. Sherry King to the Animal Control Advisory Committee. Moving on, I have Nueces County Advisory Board.
Yes, for the airport board, you have, excuse me, two incumbents have submitted letters of interest, Renee Cervantes and Sam Dalton.
I've got a motion and a double seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign? I saw Sam. Sam, thank you for serving.
I'd like to ask the court to open this up again, because we have two more vacancies.
So Judge, I spoke with Judge Bobby, Robert Bobby Gonzalez last week, and I thought he said he had submitted it. It may have been past the deadline, I don't know if Margaret received it or not. So there is...
We'll just reopen it again.
It's just gonna, yeah, reopen, and it's, I mean, that's gonna be...
How far past the deadline was it?
We'll just reopen it again. I mean, I don't think you're gonna miss a meeting. You don't have a meeting scheduled.
That's fine, that's fine, just ask. Fifteen minutes.
Is Renee here? Okay.
And we can put, can we put that back on for...
Yes, it will be back on for the sixth.
Okay.
I just like keeping it consistent, because I also receive emails after the fact, and I always say, I'm so sorry, but we have to stay within the policy.
Agreed, agreed.
Protection for all of us.
Totally agree.
Okay. I don't want to...
Totally agree. Just was asking.
I think we have an all in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign? Thank you again, and we will reopen the last two positions, and encourage Judge Gonzalez to, to resubmit.
I'll give you one more emergency district.
They did them both.
We did them both together.
They did them both at the same time.
Okay. And then the next, the next one is the Emergency Service District Number Three. And for this one, I have a resignation and an application. Tyner, is that correct?
It's Michael Benton is the new applicant.
Correct. Is Michael here today? Okay. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign? All right. The next one is the announcement by the Nueces County Judge to appoint, well, for an appointee for the Nueces County Industrial Commission, otherwise known or DBA'd as the Nueces County Development Commission, NCDC, pursuant to Chapter 381 of the Texas Local Government Code. And these are appointments that I make by statute. Currently, we have seven members. The board can have up to 15 by statute. Actually, I think that's, yes, it is statutorily defined in 381. And we started off with seven, and we, I think a good number is nine. And so in that effort to get to nine, I've made a, an appointment, a choice, and I've advised her to be here today, and she is here today. And I would like for her to stand, and, and if you'd like to, just, you don't have to, but if you want to stand, at least come and be recognized. I would like to introduce all of you to Ms. Linda Stewart. Linda is, has been one of those people, John, Commissioner Modas, that you talk about, who has, has placed her application for many boards, and really said, I wish to serve this community. And while it didn't work out for her in that one spot, I spoke to her about her willingness to serve Nueces County at an amazing time in our community's history with unprecedented growth in developing more business for Nueces County. And I'd like for you to know that she's a member of the NAACP. In fact, I believe she's been an officer in the Executive Committee. She's also an officer of the Corpus Christi Black Chamber of Commerce Board, and she's been involved with the Rising Star Food Pantry. When she submitted her application, I noticed her immediately to the RTA. I absolutely loved what she said, Linda, about your willingness to serve and, and how that you said that so many times, people who serve on boards aren't able to actually relate to the people they're serving. And you're a pastor's wife, as I remember. And I think that having served in the church, you really understand what it means to be a humble servant. And I chose you because I believe that our community has to represent the faces of our community. And your representation in the church, in the interfaith community, in absolutely advocating for civil rights and equality and justice and small business makes you an ideal candidate. They meet every month. You will have to get some training, but that's probably gonna be exciting. I know the county attorney will give you some information about Open Meetings Act and some of the things that, that there are, some of the rules that they follow operating-wise. But I know accompanying you here today is also Marlon. I don't know if you want to recognize anybody, but I know it's in its infancy, but I predict in a decade from now, we're gonna look back and say, you'll be able to say, I was on the founding board of the Nueces County Development Commission, and because of our efforts and the regional efforts of the CCREDC, look at what we've been able to do for our community. So I'm, I'm so proud that you're willing to serve.
And I'm so grateful and humble to, to be able to serve.
Thank you.
I believe that I bring a lot of compassion for people. I have a love for people.
I know.
And I just want to be God's servant for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for allowing me.
Thank you. Well, the only thing I ask is that you, you bring the voice of the people to, to this courthouse when you all meet, and, and that you, that you help try to bring more great business, so we can have great jobs and prosperity and the type of quality of place that people want to live in. So thank you so much, and, and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you for serving, ma'am.
So that makes eight, that's an, that's an even number. So on November 6th, we'll name our ninth. I want you to know that I've specifically targeted the young business professionals and asked them to, to round out my, what I think is an incredibly diverse group. But we are lacking a millennial on this group. And I specifically am targeting, but not limited to, the young business professionals in our community, or any millennial who's interested in serving. So looking forward to, to seeing who that final ninth person will be. At this time, we move into a workshop to conduct a conversation on the creation of a Nueces County Fire Marshal, including and not limited to the discussions of support, funding, and possible partnerships with other entities. For the matter of housekeeping, do you want me to recess out of the, the meeting and come into the workshop? I'll do so, yes, sir.
Sorry, could I just ask, I know, and it's my fault, I should've brought this up before. Is there any way we could do public comment to let the people that are here to talk?
I'm happy to do so.
I apologize, and I should've said that to you before.
I'm happy to take care of public comment. I was taking everything in order.
No, and that's, that's my fault. I appreciate your courtesy.
Let's, let's suspend the workshop concept for a moment. I haven't recessed out anyway. I'm gonna recognize that we have five speakers, and the first is Errol Summerlin. Mr. Summerlin, welcome. As a reminder to the audience, they speak for approximately three minutes, and, and we listen intently, and we don't speak back unless we sign up ourselves. Please proceed.
Thank you, Judge. Judge, Commissioners, my name is Errol Summerlin, and I live in Portland, Texas. I'm a member of the Coastal Alliance to Protect Our Environment. CAPE is the group, and there is unanimity among CAPE members that we do not want to become the petrochemical center of the world. We already see ongoing construction permitting and planning for new tank farms, fractionators, plastic plants, a steel mill, marine terminals, pipelines and rail yards, dredging for VLCCs, offshore terminals. One seawater desal facility has already been permitted in the inner harbor. Five more are being looked at within our closed base system. The cumulative impacts to public health in our delicate ecosystem are still unknown, and yet they have been blessed to proceed. Today, the EDC discloses Project Two Step, a billion-dollar expansion at Lion Del Basel over by the Epic Y Logistics Fractionator and the tank farm that's being built. They disclose that they are actively trying to get Formosa Plastics to locate here. Formosa. They were found to be serial violators in the release of plastic pellets throughout the creeks, estuaries, and bays near Point Comfort. We don't need them here, period. There's a list of other projects they're working on. Ten of the 13 projects on that list are chemical, natural gas, or petrochemical facilities. You need to send a different message to the EDC and to these industries. We don't want to become the petrochemical hub for the world, so do not expect the billions in tax breaks that the EDC is promising them. We are not going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on seawater desalination to satisfy your thirst for fresh water. We want something different, perhaps what the NCDC might promote. The Army Corps of Engineers, the Maritime Administration, TCEQ, are all looking at permits individually. It is up to us to consider the cumulative impacts of this reckless growth. Finally, in 2009, a Driscoll Children's Hospital study concluded that no child should live within 20 miles of a petrochemical facility. No child. Who are we doing this for? We need to stop this now. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Taylor, is it Oldroyd? Oldroyd, welcome, sir.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Judge and Commissioners, it's Taylor Oldroyd. Star Wars movie's coming out soon, so I'm your favorite droid.
That's right.
Yeah, and I represent the Association of Realtors in the community, and it's just an honor to be here. It's been on my to-do list for quite a while to come say hi. I've met many of you outside and other events and activities in the community, but I just wanted to come and introduce myself and say hello. And it's a beautiful day, and your meeting started with a beautiful prayer, and I'm just honored to be here and thank you for your service. You know, our organization's been through some challenges, and a true character of any individual or organization is when we go through tough times and, and face adversity. We're survivors of, of that, those challenges, in part because we're Texas strong and because we're committed to our founding principles that we've, we've been around since 1925. So we're coming up on a 100-year anniversary. And I just want to read to you in the preamble of our Code of Ethics, it says, quote, "Under all is the land. Upon its wise utilization and widely allocated ownership depend the survival and growth of free institutions and of our civilization. Realtors should recognize that the interests of the nation and its citizens require the highest and best use of the land and the widest distribution of land ownership. They require the creation of adequate housing, the building of functioning cities, the development of productive industries and farms, and the preservation of a healthful environment." So we're honored to have that as our Code of Ethics, and we're committed to that. And our 1,500 members roughly are eager to partner with you in initiatives that build a prosperous future. So I thank you for your service and your commitment to excellence. I feel like that's kind of been the theme this morning, is this commitment to excellence. And, and that's a goal that Realtors share, and, and I just look forward to working with you. I'm new to your community, came here from North Carolina, just honored to be here. When I was in, being interviewed, I told them that I like tacos and Dr. Pepper, and they said, you're a Texan. So it's just great to be here and, and look forward to working with you, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Yulenfeld, Gary Yulenfeld is next. Just for the record, I'm supposed to remind everybody, would you state your name and your address when you get there? I forgot earlier, but I have it written for you, Mr. Oldroyd.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Gary Yulenfeld, 207 East Joyce in Bishop, Texas. I am the current president of Nueces County Emergency Services District Number Three. And I'm actually here on behalf of an, an agenda item, a regular agenda item, 4A9.
And we need to hold on, we gotta wait to do that one for the agenda.
Oh, okay. Would you mind?
There, there is a chance that I may not be here for that.
You can't do it now, sorry. I mean, right?
Very good, well...
I'm not trying to cut you off, we want you...
I, I didn't understand.
No, no, I know.
No worries.
I wrote that agenda item on the...
You did. My apologies.
Anyways...
We will, we will do our best. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Pablo Galvan? Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Pablo Galvan, 4725 Longoria, and that's in the Spring Garden subdivision between Robstown and Maquete. I'm here today, I wanted to see if you guys would take up zoning rural residential areas for residential only.
Can you pull that mic down too, so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Yes, I was asking, I was wanting to ask the County Commissioners Court to take up residential zoning ordinances of rural areas of Nueces County that have residential neighborhoods. And this is basically to prevent non-agricultural businesses from operating and causing a public nuisance to residents, property, animal life, and vegetation, as stated in the Texas Administrative Code, Part 1, Chapter 111, Subchapter A, Rule 1 of 4.4. Basically like paint and body shops that are illegal, junkyards that don't have permits and stuff out in the rural areas. Refineries and tank farms that could come up without any zoning ordinances. Excuse me. I know you only have two code enforcement officers for all of Nueces County, but I believe having ordinances like this will provide code enforcement with more authority to enforce zoning violations and public nuisances. You know, back again to paint and body shops, you know, fumes, overspray, that's, that's causing a nuisance to the residents. You know, back again to paint and body shops, you know, fumes, overspray, that's, that's causing a nuisance to the residents. Um, also illegal trash burning since they don't have any utilities. That more or less concludes what I wanted to ask and I do have pictures if y'all are interested in, in one of the properties that's right next door to me, to where when the prevailing winds are blowing and they're painting, they paint with the doors open. So all the fumes and overspray crosses property lines and we don't want to breathe that stuff. You know, so we have to go indoors until they finish. Or sometimes they paint all hours of the day. Sometimes they paint overnight, sometimes in the morning, afternoons. I mean, you can't go outside uh, without having to smell all these toxic VOCs coming from paint. And, um, we've talked to the people before, but they tell us that they're not regulated and they can do what they want. So, this is a topic that, um, needs to be addressed. And, and I do want to thank Commissioner Modis because he has taken the time to listen to my complaints before and, uh, thank him for some of the actions that he's taken, but I believe this has to be done by the whole Commissioners Court and helping out the residents of the rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I've put, uh, the court recognizes Commissioner Gonzalez.
Pablo Galván.
Pablo Galván, um, just to let you know, uh, I, I know what you're talking about and I feel what you're saying, but you know, if there, if it's something that's going on continuously, and this is why we had the code enforcement officers, you, you need to call them, you know, and, and they don't respond, you need to call us, but.
Oh, I'm on a first-name basis with Ned Cherry.
Well, you also need to call the other code enforcement officer too, because
Yeah.
if it's a nuisance, it is, there's certain things that they, they can do as far as nuisance.
I also have been calling TCQ, I've been taking odor logs, I've been reporting, turning all that stuff in. But it seems like every agency is limited in their abilities to enforce anything without actual zoning for, for residential areas out in the rural areas. And it, it's like that gentleman stated when we asked him, you know, hey, you know, we don't care if you're out here doing business or whatever, as long as we don't smell it and it doesn't affect us on our property, that's fine. But when he stated that, hey, I don't have any regulations out here, I'm not regulated, I can do what I want. You know, it's, it's, it's time, I think, that we address this.
I'm going to assign Commissioner John Modis.
If you can just get us those photos. I've, I've been there, but if you can get those, just if we can get those to us for further discussion in the future.
I.
I know, but they can't.
I'm not, we're not talking about it. I'm just asking him for the photos that he said.
Well, he's allowed to submit written comments and if your written comment has attachments, uh, just submit them to the court manager. Is that correct, uh, Loura? Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to Mr. David or Dave Resendes. And you're not here for any agenda item, correct, sir?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Dave Resendes. My address is eighty-seven oh-two King Ranch Drive. I am the owner of Apollo Towing here in Corpus Christi. I'm extremely involved in my community and I love what I do because I got millions of dollars invested in the industry that I'm in. I have gone to the city police department and they are in the process now of revamping our ordinance because we have a problem. We have a bigger problem in Nuasis County. It's been falling on deaf ears for years now and I would like it to be addressed. We have an ordinance on the county and there is no, nothing wrong with going and charging somebody twelve hundred dollars because they got arrested. When you make a complaint, it gets ignored. They're still on our rotation lift, uh, list with the Nuasis County Sheriff's Department. If an eighteen-wheeler rolls over, we have a company in Robstown, Texas, that runs up and down Highway seventy-seven and our county ordinance gets thrown to the side and a job that should run three grand is fifteen thousand dollars. And it's been ignored and ignored and ignored now for years. Our ordinance is very, very old. It needs to be updated. I've taken a forty-one percent increase in equipment costs in the eight years since this ordinance has been addressed. And I get everything's gone up, but you don't take advantage of people on the road. And that is what's going on and they're still on the rotation list for the Nuasis County Sheriff's Department. Texas Rangers right now is in the process of investigating several towing companies in Corpus Christi and they're still on your rotation list with this going on. They are operating in Nuasis County. It's not fair to the owners, the insurance company, or anybody involved. And I am asking y'all to please, if we can address our ordinance and let's do something about the people that are being taken advantage because I love what I do and I don't like this black eye on our industry. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes all of the, um, public speakers for public comment that I have, but I always allow one last call. If there are anybody, yes. I will sign Dr. Gloria Scott up and you can approach the podium at this time. Edward, if I may give this to you, she can fill out the rest of it as she departs. Welcome.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners and the audience. I simply want to very quickly identify something that I think falls in the county area too. As you know, we have this huge problem of homelessness in Corpus Christi and a large number of us in the community and around have been working with city council. And we, we know that, uh, the city manager has just appointed Reverend, uh, Barden Bailey from First United Methodist to come in and head up a division of dealing with the homeless problem. But our suggestion to them several weeks ago was that instead of taking the money they had designated to tear down Old Spawn Memorial Hospital, something like fifty thousand dollars or more, that they take that and anything else and work with the county if necessary or wherever to create a homeless building for the homeless in Corpus Christi using Old Spawn Memorial. It has a kitchen, it has a dining room, it has all the places downstairs to sit. It has offices on the first floor as it operated as a hospital, but that, we don't want it to operate as a hospital. But room number two twelve may be where I live if I'm assigned to that. And it has a room, a small room with the restroom and everything in it. And on each floor, there are places for showers or whatever else. And so we would simply want to put that on our agenda to be a part of this since that's in this community and maybe even has some county investment in it, but to look at. And many of us are willing to volunteer, some in the audience this morning, from many places to serve as a committee or whatever we need to do to help convert that and even after it's done, to, to volunteer over there to help out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm, um, going to take a liberty here. I'm going to advance, um, a regular agenda item in the interest of time and knowing that we're going to take a break. Um, and that is, I'm going to get the right number here. But it's the receiving of the report from the, um, CCR EDC. Thank you Carolyn. It's number two. That's four A two for the clerk and welcome. We have, um, with us Butch Poole, who is our Nuasis County appointee to the CCR EDC, but accompanying him is the Chief Executive Officer, Ian Vasey. And you're going to give us a report on recent activities and, um, and we're also going to be accepting, I believe, the formal FY eighteen nineteen report is what my document says. Is that correct? Okay, welcome Butch.
Morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Uh, my name is Butch Poole and I am the county appointee for the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Corporation and Development Corporation and, um, I had asked that, uh, Ian, give a, at least semi-annual accounting of what we do. And, uh, there's very exciting things going on and we are growing and doing what we've been asked to do. And I, I think, uh, you'll find that, uh, Ian has got a really exciting report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for setting the table. Welcome Ian.
Uh, good morning Judge Commissioners and I also want to recognize Commissioner Chesney, who is the ex-officio member and hasn't missed a meeting, uh, in the last year that we, we know about. So, we, the county's well represented on our Board of Directors. Um, as we do from, from time to time, we present, uh, what's going on in the local economy and what we've been up to. So what you'll see is, um, year over year, we added thirty-three hundred jobs in this, in this MSA. That's how, uh, the, the numbers are, are collected and, and accounted for by, uh, by both the state and the federal government. The largest increases in mining, logging, construction, um, in this area, it's primarily, primarily construction. But we've also seen increases in manufacturing jobs. Once we get down to, uh, kind of the granular level, you know, even the other side, macro level, I suppose as well, is unemployment rate hovers around four percent. We're starting to get into that full employment kind of number, which means if people are, are educated, willing to work, pass drug tests and, and have some qualifications, that, that the majority of folks are going to be able to find work in this, in this community. So, one of the, the things that I'm going to talk about in our business retention visits, what we hear about, uh, some labor issues and the, the shortage of labor and the needing to upskill some folks as well. Um, within, uh, the work and purview of the CCR EDC, um, the, the projects we've been working on since about two thousand eleven, uh, two hundred and seventy-seven million in tax, in new tax revenues have been created um, throughout the, the various taxing districts, everything from hospital boards to school districts to you name it. Um, the county, the city, the, the drainage districts, things like that. Three thousand direct, uh, jobs from these announced projects, fifty-two billion dollars, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. But the most interesting number, I think, is the hundred and, hundred and ninety-five million dollars in new created annual payroll. So the people that are working in these jobs on these, in these, uh, um, companies, they're spending that hundred and ninety-five million. Um, it's probably maybe two mil, two hundred million by now. Um, a hundred and ninety-five million goes through our local economy, spent in local restaurants, uh, grocery stores, car dealerships, you name it. So, that's what's spent, uh, in, in our, in our economy. So you'll see the, the spread of the fifty-two billion in capital investment, pretty well spread. Now, there's a couple of large projects that, that kind of skew the numbers in our metro area that, um, um, Cheniere and the Exxon Sabeck deal as well, but, you know, the rest of the projects are pretty much spread throughout.
Those projects, uh, are part of the fifty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so it skews the number. So the, the project are a lot, kind of, it's probably smaller than the, than the average would probably indicate. Um, again, we work on, uh, on regional economic development strategies. Uh, we, we believe we're stronger together and, uh, in working on, uh, site selection process, more assets at the table. We're very much, um, relationship-based, but we also, um, do data gathering. We, we promote our area based on actual fa, facts and information. Um, and, um, such as the qualified sites and we, we adopt the IEDC best practices. And then we also participate in workforce and help, uh, help build our workforce. And one of the things that you'll see, in fact, it was just announced this week by Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi that, uh, in, uh, with our push to create the, uh, the, the industrial and civil engineering program, that's going to get off the ground at the, uh, we use type A muttony to be able to match against what's, the state was able to provide to create those two new engineering programs, which are important for educating our kids and keeping them here in the community. We, four years ago, we did actually, um, target industry analysis and figured out where we can be competitive and where we need to be, uh, spending our efforts. We play Moneyball economic development. We, we don't have millions and millions of dollars to be able to go out and recruit new, um, you know, come up with a new target strategy or anything like that. So we have to focus where we're going to have a high win percentage. We, we targeted specialty steel production and we're starting to see some things, uh, being built with, um, uh, steel dynamics, but also that's going to lead to kind of like a hub for, for other steel manufacturing throughout the, and, and metal manufacturing throughout the area. We're seeing a lot of activity in the oil and gas, shale, oil, natural gas liquids. That's kind of the, the broad catch-all category for, for those, uh, petrochemical sectors which are, uh, coming into this area. And we, we do present, uh, we're seeing a lot of activity and as you, as you know Judge, from the, the, your activities with the port, the, the amount of, uh, oil and gas coming into this area for manufacturing purposes is, is probably one of the largest and unmatched in the United States. We're also doing aircraft manufacturing, unmanned aerial systems. In fact, we've got a team doing a trade show this week in Las Vegas for unmanned aerial systems. We partner with Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi on that one to try and get those drone companies and aviation-related companies. That's the high-tech jobs and the coding pieces. And if you notice that we're starting to try and really lift on that.
Yeah, do you think there might be some, I've always said that diversification is the best economy and to get diversification, we need more technology companies here. But of course, to get a good technology company, you have to have research. But here's where this one actually matches up. Do you think there's a possibility that we could, this is not a pun, but hone in on a technology company to work with Texas A&amp;M? In other words, is that something that, that's on maybe the horizon? Because that would please a lot of people to have a, a technology company here.
We are chasing technology.
We are.
And, uh, you know, I just talked to, um, our head of recruitment, Tommy Kurtz, is actually heading up the, the, the little delegation we have at that.
In the Vegas conference.
Yeah, and we've got a booth and we partnered with, like I say, we, he's been talking to, he says there's about seven good leads for, for technology-related companies that are in the drone space that he's going to follow up, be following up. So this is how we get the word out and put ourselves on the map. And again, the university now is awarding a PhD in unmanned aerial systems. I think that's the correct way.
That's correct.
That's important. And one of the things that we traditionally, you know, we haven't really been strong as an organization is building our small business and entrepreneurship development. So we've supported SCORE and some folks like that, but we really need to spend more time in building our entrepreneurial ecosystem and, and we've been trying to get it off the ground. And I'm going to tell you, I don't give us an A in that, in that sector yet. We're going to work on that. That's an area we spend a lot of time. And we're going to, we're going to have to spend a lot, a lot more of my time and money doing, doing those entrepreneurial things. And, you know, it's been a long-term discussion of the Board of Directors and the staff and how we can promote entrepreneurialism in this community.
Well, at least the goal is right.
No, you're right. Uh, um, you'll see some of the upcoming events, the helicopter expo we did, oh, we've got coming up. That, that commercial unmanned aerial vehicles, you'll see that at the top there. That's what we're doing this week. We're at, uh, World Petrochemical Conferences, we're at Major Repair, MRO, which is Major Maintenance Repair and Operations. We're at Steel Technology. So those are some of the things. And you'll see a picture of our booth and I think that looks like Tommy and Eddie from the port doing, passing out information and meeting with some folks there and, and, you know, trying to get them to pay attention to our area and put ourselves on the map. And then, uh, we've got a, a number of projects. These are, are some highlights, but, uh, we just code them by numbers. And, um, you'll see, uh, companies looking across the board. And again, like I say, petrochemical's just kind of that catch-all project for, it could be natural gas liquids. It could be chemical related. It could be, it could be anything related to, to refining operations. We've got midstream in there because we're seeing a lot of activity from the midstream companies that are bringing, uh, those pipelines into the area with, with both oil and gas and related products from the Eagle Ford and the Permian Basin. Um, one interesting one there, we're, we're, we're chasing this one and it, it came out of a lead from the governor's office where there's a battery manufacturer out there. Again, I don't know where we're going. These are companies that we pursue and we pursue all of those, all of those leads and follow up as best we can on some of these.
Yeah, we'd love to, we'd love to put five stars by that one. I mean, clearly the future is in hydrogen fuel cell batteries and as well as lithium ion batteries. And this is something that is absolutely perfect. Um, we talk about clean energy inside industrial spaces all the time and this is really, really where it's at. I, I don't know what we can do, but I can guarantee if I polled everybody up here, we would all be cheerleaders for, um, ion battery, um, technology here.
I agree Judge, and you and I have had the.
I mean, I'm just like, keep chasing, please. I don't, I don't know what we can do, but that's what we're here for.
The, the, these projects, actually it's, it's, it's a little unusual that companies, people assume we win projects. It's actually a little bit in the reverse. It's that, that site selection companies, you know, start out with a wide net and then they X people off. So it's like you're the, not the winner of the deal, you're the last loser, if you will. So they X, they eliminate companies and you're trying to get through all of those gates. And so that, that, we are pursuing it as hard as we can to remain on that competitive list. And you know, some of the sites we've been talking about and pursuing. Anyway, one, one piece that, of our, of our work that doesn't really seem to get a whole lot of attention is the business retention and expansion visits. So here's the, the examples of, of the spread of how we've been, uh, meeting with our companies in, uh, in this area and sitting down doing structured interviews, understanding what, uh, the major concerns of companies are and company leaders. So we can report back to, to boards such as yourselves, the Port Commission, City Council, various folks like that, about how we can improve public policy. And so some of the things we, we see, and actually the first thing we're hearing right now is workforce development needs. Workforce is the number one issue we're hearing. And, uh, right up there, top workforce needs are scientific and technical and I think it's no secret. We meet with engineering, a lot of major engineering companies which have high-paying jobs. Every single one of them's hiring right now and they're struggling to get those folks. And they're trying to bring folks in the area and some of the engineering companies are having to recruit people from other states.
Ian, let me ask you on this because, you know, back in my previous experience, I was on school board and there was a lot of talk with the, the changes in state law that really pushed more to specialized education in the high school levels. And so now we see a lot more young people who are able to choose, um, uh, technology or something, you know, industry-based here locally. And so. And so is it still too early to map that, to measure that out, to see if if that's kind of helping the need? Or is it, are we still losing out on a lot of jobs? Because I know kids or young people now who went through high school, did welding and whatever, and are now welding, making good money.
Hundred plus thousand a year.
Yeah, they're doing great. And so, but are we getting enough out of that? Or is it still too early in that program to figure out, is it, is it helping us?
I'm going to be careful how I choose my words here, Commissioner, but some school districts get it more than others. And, I mean, I I'm, I get in trouble sometimes. I speak to some of the schools and some of the classes at their like Dollars and Cents program. And invariably, I'll get a student ask me, what should we be doing? Where should we be planning? And my answer is, and I get, this is where I get myself in trouble. The top twenty percent of kids, go study whatever you want academically, you can study, doesn't matter. At a good university, you're going to get it. The twenty percent below that, you're going to be, you know, if it's in a STEM field, that's where you should be focusing your efforts, computers and science, technology. The fifty, sixty percent, you know, of the less academically gifted kids, if you want to make a hundred plus thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand a year, Process Technology Program at Del Mar or the welding programs that you talked about, those, there's twenty year old kids who are coming out making a hundred and twenty thousand a year with overtime because they're good welders or electricians or plumber. We have, in the United States, we have a huge, and I meet with a lot of my counterparts across the country who run economic development outfits, and it's across the board. We are short of those technical fields and the trades. We need to get as many folks as we can paying attention. And I think the intervention isn't even just in the high schools. We have to get it at the middle school level, and we have to get parents educated that, you know, that there's, you know, great jobs to be had, and you'll make a lot of money, you know, if that's what you want in an electrical field, electrician field or plumbing or things like that, pipe fitting.
Well, and so for the future, because once again, this is only a few years in existence where there's been that focus. So, you know, going into the future, if you can kind of look at those numbers and see, is there any strength, any gain out of that from our local crop that is helping meet those those needs?
Well, it is. And, you know, one of the things we've done, if you remember, we, and Commissioner Vaughn will remember, about a year and a half ago, we moved into using type A money to be able to double the size of the Process Technology Program at at Del Mar College. And I think we're going to need to double it again in a couple of years. There's a lot of demand. The other thing that's that we're starting to hear is unskilled production labor. So, you know, the the days of seven to ten dollar an hour, in fact, I had a conversation with a, I was waiting in the doctor's, my doctor's office, and I was sitting next to somebody who was a CEO of a of a company. And he said, you guys, all the companies coming, I can't pay people under ten dollars an hour anymore to get my labor. And I'm kind of like, you know, that's a, that's actually a good thing, you know, so so it's lifting people out of.
Yeah, he should have said fifteen.
Actually, I said, why don't you try paying people fifteen dollars an hour?
Why don't you try talking about a real living wage?
And then so.
Couldn't help the outburst.
I'm with you on that one, actually. We need to get as many folks so we can buy cars and pay for rents and things like that. Yeah, I'm with you. Let's see, so regional strengths are customer supply accessibility. You know, the, a few years ago, one of the the issues we were hearing is quality of roads. Now, we're starting to hear one of the things is, is there's so much road construction, which, you know, one leads to the others. But business climate being positive, our location's good, and we're starting to see, you know, across the board there. Let's see, one of the regional challenges, labor worker supply comes up high. Government services, that that come, when we drill down into that, that's development services and some some things there. So we're really working, in fact, the city manager and I have had at Corpus Christi, and I've had a number of conversations about this. Our infrastructure is that number, a couple of years ago, that infrastructure being poor was probably twice that number. So it's kind of shrinking in that. So that's a sign that we're moving in the right direction. We don't have it all solved. The the community as a whole doesn't have it all solved, but it's moving and heading in the right direction. And then you'll see some of the other, some of the other things that we hear from these business leaders. We track on a very regular basis. It's coming out about every quarter right now. You know, so we're adding jobs, we're adding population, people are moving here. And then we track when houses are, and when I say houses, it's housing units because it really doesn't differentiate between an apartment or single family home or an attached home. It's a place that a family can live. And we're adding those, and one of the things we're realizing is that the amount of housing development isn't keeping pace with the growth that's coming. And, you know, and the next slide really is the interesting one. Did we put it in there? Oh, yeah, here it is, the affordability index. So if we've scaled this, so so the, I think it's the the red is the left scale, which is median household income, and the right is the median home price. And that's, that's the blue line, and we've scaled them so that when the two lines come together, that means the median family can buy the additional financing, which is typically in rule of thumb. Now, banks have a little bit more exotic products now and mortgages, but it's essentially three times income minus debt. So if a family's making sixty thousand a year, you multiply that by three, it's a hundred and eighty thousand. Then you deduct some debt. If it's ten, fifteen thousand dollars worth of car, medical credit card, whatever it is. And so you look at that, the last time the median family could really buy the median house was about two thousand twelve. And when those two lines diverge, it means we've got a bit of a housing affordability issue. And that's, and Taylor and I, Oldroyd from the Housing Association, the Realtors Association, and I've had conversations about this. We've talked to some of the the real estate developers and folks like that, but we need to start seeing a lot more housing developed. And it's not the high end stuff, it's not the three hundred thousand stuff. It's the, it's the, we need to get in that hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand range, and that's, that's a challenge. And we're, you know, we're hearing from the home builders that labor is an, labor availability is an issue for them.
Well, and if if they'll actually do like a blend, then it works for everybody. And I think the problem has always been is they're fixated on land costs because in their mind, I can only have a subdivision that's homogeneous, and this is backwards thinking. If they'll actually create a mixed use where you have five hundred thousand dollar homes with three hundred thousand dollar homes with two hundred thousand dollar homes, and you create a village blend effect, then it works for the home developer, it works for the community, and this is something that we really need to encourage. And that's what I'm really hoping that the message that we just happen to all be here converging together. We have literally the perfect storm here in a positive way. You have NCDC membership here, you have Realtors, and you have EDC. And and I think if we can break the old way of thinking and merge it, and this is good, it's good for how people grow up, you know? And and I lived in a neighborhood where it was a little bit of everything when I was growing up, and I never saw differences because we all played together, we all had, we all went to school together, we all had, our communities were like this. Today, it's very different. Today, it's you live here, you live there. And this this difference in perspective between poverty, middle class and 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 wealth is really what's hurting our communities, and I'm really glad that you're emphasizing this, Ian. This is really good.
We're trying to pay attention to it, and and one of the things we're, you know, it's, it leads to polarization and leads to other kinds of issues that you as a county commissioner will have to deal with in other ways. And, you know, you know what, those issues are just out of my lane. But what I would tell you is I've, I'm hitting on every single one of the the home builders. And I volunteered to take a few to other place, in a prior life, I did corporate commercial real estate. I used to to help work on acquisitions for mixed use developments and and housing developments. In fact, I volunteered to get on a plane with somebody and take them to go see a project we did in Arizona, which people, it was that mix use, that kind of little downtown area, and then there was condos, apartments, attached homes, townhouses. And then there was.
Works.
As well, and it does work. I mean, it it's actually.
Well, and I think Commissioner Chesney would agree that, you know, Port Aransas is is kind of case in point here. You know, we struggled very much to get low to moderate income housing there for people who work in the seaside resorts. And and that's our challenge right now, and I want to start encouraging those types of buildings so that the million dollar homes keep getting built. We love that from an ad valorem, but it doesn't mean anything if nobody can live there that's going to support the the industries. So I I really think this is good.
Ian, I want to come off what she said, because what she said is a Jeff Blackard thing. That's what he does.
Actually, that's very true.
It's mixed use, and that's what he does, and you ought to get with him.
I actually, I know Jeff very well, and he and I have been in the office, and we we agree on a lot of things, and we butt heads on some others, but.
Okay.
You know, it's.
That's healthy.
I I got a couple of questions to ask you before you move on. I have a concern too, you know, a gentleman came up here talking about the industry. I don't want to become a Beaumont. He's absolutely right. And I know in my area and John's, I'm beginning to see more and more out there, and that's a farming community as well. And it's getting lost with everything that's coming in. And I think the reason you guys go for the big ones, they're the big bucks, all the industry, and looking at what you did in your charts, do you have a criteria that you're saying, oh, I'm only going to go for a company that's above this amount?
No, actually, Commissioner, we we don't. And and as an example, our, our, one of our staff is is leading up an effort for a twenty million dollar expansion on a manufacturer. So we do, we do many types of projects. We we aren't just doing the the big deals. We're all across the board. In fact, it's, we, you'll see some of them, we've, we're one million dollar investment project.
I'd just like to see us diversify and get some different things other than just industry.
Yeah, you know, one of the weird things that we get into with this is the state is continually putting putting more restrictions on what a city or a county can can do to limit those uses. Like, as an example, that the state prohibits the county or city from restricting oil and gas manufacturing use, and your hands are tied. I mean, and by the way, at risk of editorializing, the the state are the politicians are the first to squeal when the federal government does that to them and ties their hands on something. But the counties and the cities are very, have had a very tough go of it in the legislature the last couple of years in being able to restrict some of these uses. And you and I have had that conversation a number of times, and it's.
Not fair.
Yeah, it's not fair. I'm absolutely with you. Anyway, so in terms of the other things, I want to be sensitive to your time. We're working on some things for quality of life that's our snapshot of our new explorethecostalben.com because we've got people moving in from some of the, some companies that are expanding. They want to know about neighborhoods, they want to, they want to know about schools, they want to know all the data. And, you know, it's not perfect, it's a work in progress. But we're slicing and dicing on, in fact, I've got a meeting with with the police chief this afternoon on how information's reported, if you recall, the the conversation we had at the Board of Directors. Something just didn't strike me as being right, but it's how crime stats are reported in certain areas. So we're going to get to the bottom of that one, work on that. And then our last piece is in something that that we really are paying a lot of attention to, the the opportunity zone. So our website, another website we've created is corpuschristiopportunities.com to describe what, it's almost, it's if you've got capital gains as an investor and are and are able to invest that in a project within those designated federal opportunity zones, you shield a lot of your 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 tax liability by investing in some of these areas that are perhaps historically underserved.
Ian, I know this would create work and and obviously the need for a sponsor, but what do you think about possibly in early first quarter twenty twenty, hosting a symposium on opportunity zones and highlighting some of our amazing possible potential projects? You know, I think the best way to get people, I know New Orleans had one, and we sent some folks to New Orleans. But I think that that if we were to host, and I'm offering myself up as the worker bee to put it together, but I would need y'all's buy in. I think that, I mean, I'm talking about a, you know, just a half day or, it doesn't have to be a big conference, just, we need to wave the flag as high as we can, as bright as we can, but then we would go out and solicit, you know, New York and possible Houston, Dallas Opportunity Hedge Fund groups to come and take a look at our projects. I personally think that seeing is believing. I think it's very nice to what see things on the internet, but if you've ever booked a hotel on the internet, then you go there, it's a different feel. You, coming here is very inspiring, and we know this based on on how people, you know, what do you think about that? And you don't have to commit to your CCR EDC. I'm just trying to give you a feel for why. You've done the hard work, right? You've put the data together, you have the projects, you have the people. I'm telling you, I think that we need to be the place.
I'll tell you that there is a, and I'm feeling my wrist buzzing because my staff's probably texting me right now as they're watching.
Like saying, don't, don't commit to her. Don't say yes.
But I will tell you, we are one of the first cities and areas in the in the state to have a project. Because it involves somebody's tax.
No, no, you don't have to say anything.
But we've got one, and you guys know who it is.
Yeah.
There is a project that's using these opportunity zone tax, tax credits. I want to say, yes, I like the idea of it, but I'm without.
It's okay, I'm going to do it anyway. I'm just trying to get you to to say it.
Christine might.
Hey, look, look, I got to take her. I got to take her. You know what I mean?
We would love to, Judge.
You know what you should say? We would love to consider that, and Butch, you're our pointy, and this is our, this is just an idea. But I think it's really smart, and I know what's hard for Ian's position is that he has only so much time and staff and dollars to commit. But I'm just trying to throw out this softball here.
Actually, so we did have one in in Opportunity Zone Seminar in April, which was well attended. But I've got the green light from one of my staff who just texted in and go, yeah, we're happy to have another. I was just not wanting to commit.
I hear you.
Their their time until I had a chance to talk to them, but yeah.
I'm more impressed that they're watching and they're buzzing you.
No, it's, it's important. By the way, two of my staff met personally and with a couple of other folks with.
Here.
Ben Carson.
Oh.
Personally, in.
Wonderful.
To talk about this and.
Right.
Put ourselves on the map, and he was very gracious and and worked through on on some things and sent them back to staff. And we also, they met with senior advisor to the White.
Turner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe his name is Turner, last name Turner. Yeah, I just, I feel like we're very fortunate. We had Texans lead the charge on the opportunity zone. Some people have highly criticized it, saying it's not really benefited the economically disadvantaged. Corpus Christi is an exception to this rule. The areas the opportunity zone have been designated are truly economically disadvantaged. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind about this. So let's bring it on and and let's create a little bit of a highlight. And I think a seminar is great, but I'm really talking about getting city, county, EDC, everybody on board to highlight their projects. In other words, you can be neutral, but we can come and fly our projects. The city could do theirs, and North Beach could do theirs. You know, it could be, it could be really positive.
I'm going to now.
Now that you've been told?
Now I've been told by.
There must be a woman back home.
Sarah, Christine and Sarah, that we volunteer.
There you go.
Happy, and we have the capacity.
That's great. And and these are quality of place projects, you know, not industrial projects. These are quality of place projects, and so it's great. Okay, thank you.
Can I just real quick?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to to recognize too, and I appreciate Ian saying that I was there all the time. But Bush has been very involved, and I don't think he's missed a meeting in about a year and a half or two years either. And quite frankly, the fact that he's even here and awake, he just had a baby ten days ago.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
Yeah, I know.
You look amazing.
But there's, there's a lot of, there's a, well, yeah, his wife, excuse me, I didn't say that right. Sorry, Helen, my bad. Yeah, I, his, he and his wife, anyway, I think you know what I meant. But there's, there's a lot of exciting projects going on at the EDC, and I agree, we've had that conversation, Carolyn, many times within the board about trying to diversify and and try to be less reliant on and things of that nature because I think it is, you know, very important to do to do so. I I think I would like, you know, to to bring up one of the, well, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to bring that one up yet, though, about the conversation that we're having, is that supposed to be?
It's all out.
Right, okay, right. So I, with the San Pat stuff, I mean, there there is a contemplation, Judge, and I, and you were there for for that, to to merge the San Pat EDC with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. We expressed our elephant in the room legitimate concerns because Nuasis County and San Trischo County have had a very strained relationship over the last fifty years, probably, way before any of us got here. And and I'm just making, I'm not, I'm not going too. Yeah, I'm not going too far. But but the EDCs are having the conversation to to merge. I I personally think in concept, that's a very positive thing because anything that we can do to work together is a good thing. But the devil's in the details, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure it'll work, and I'm not sure it'll be something that.
I think the best way to put it right now is we are in the very, very beginning stages. I mean, they're a different type of board, they're driven in a different way than we are. So there's going to be a lot of, how does this fit to make it work? But we're in the very, very beginning, is the best way to put it.
And there would have to be some some boundaries.
Right.
You know, that were set forth.
And originally, I brought that up is because I wanted other commissioners, if they wanted to weigh in and take that back to your board to have that opportunity to do so, because, you know, the judges at that meeting and she expressed some concerns. I publicly expressed some concerns. Not that we don't want to try to work with people, because there are a lot of things in this region that we can work together on that are important for this region. But the San Pat EDC operates very differently than, in my opinion, than the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation in that it has been a more political, political type EDC, and ours hasn't. So there's going to have to be a lot of devil in the detail type stuff. So I just want to make sure that any of the commissioners, you know, knew about that. As the ex officio member, I wanted to bring that up and bring that out and to get your feedback because obviously, that's good for Ian, and that's good for Butch to hear as to what the position of the court is on anything and everything. I do think we get our money's worth by far from the EDC, and I'm going to finish up, and then if anybody wants comments, please. I do think we. to finish up, and then if anybody wants comments, please. I do think we get our money's worth by far from the EDC. When I came on the Commissioners Court, I think we were given six or eight thousand dollars a year, something miniscule. This court, the prior court, we increased that to, to the fifty thousand dollar level contribution, which also got us a, a board seat. It's, and, and I think it's important that, that we are at the table. Nuasis County is a big player. We don't have the financial wherewithal that the city of Corpus Christi does, because they are a one point two billion dollar a year general fund budget, and we're about a hundred million. But we, we, we now are at the table. We've had a seat. But you've done a great job representing us. Like I said, I've tried to do the same. I've been there all, many times and all the time, basically. I think I missed one or two in the last three or four years, but for sickness or something like that. So a lot of good stuff going on. And I think it is important that we continue to, to do it. I would move that we accept the report and move on forward.
I have a motion and take a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. And just a little bit of discussion for Roberts rules before. Ms. Stewart, Mr. Vacy, Mr. Poole, Ms. Stewart, I hope that you all will spend a little time at least exchanging phone numbers and emails. The N C D C is definitely established to enhance, complement, bolster, boost, cheerlead for Nuasis County. But no doubt, the regional piece of it is also a very important component. So I think that one of the things that I'm looking for is diversity of thought. And so you bring that to the table. The fact that you don't know each other, right? And that's my point. So we've got to make sure that our community is talking to one another. And these are the guys that look at things regionally. And we're the folks that are going to be looking things that are in our best interest. So I think it'd be great if you have a printed copy. What you missed in, I believe, last month is that Ian's already presented to the N C D C. So if you could get a copy to Ms. Stewart, that'd be great. I think, oh, we have it. Okay, we're going to get it to you. But what you saw on screen could be helpful for you in just figuring out, hey, these are, this is what they're chasing. What they can't do is they have to put some blinders on. They're looking at it regionally. So you notice those companies that he's, that they're chasing don't have a site associated with it. But that's not our mission. Our mission is right here, right? As long as it's in the best interest of Nuasis County. So, okay, thank you so much. All in favor accepting that report signify by saying aye. Aye. Post sim sign. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I hope you thank the ladies who said yes back then, back there. I need to turn my big notebook back to the agenda. We're back in the contemplation of workshop. I'm going to gavel us out. This is kind of just a, a metaphorical gavelling us out. But we are gavelled out and the time is ten thirty. And welcome, Cara. We're gavelling out for the purposes of workshop. I had taken us out of order. We're now coming into workshop at ten thirty one AM. And I'm going to ask that we have a discussion, probably led by, Chief, do you want to come and approach? Or let me see, Tyner, how did you want to work this? I've got a lot of folks here. I've got our emergency management team. I've got a support system emergency management team with Danielle Hell. I've got Chief Michael Clack. I'm going to defer to emergency management. Who, why don't you all come up first? This is a workshop, by the way. This is meant to be interactive. But the discussion to remind everybody at home is the, the possible formation of a countywide fire marshal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we're, we're here today to talk about what a fire marshal could do for Nuasis County and, and even the, the surrounding, the cities within in Nuasis. And of course, we always extend out our, our support to our, our surrounding counties as well. So I'm sure that would happen within the, the scope of the fire marshal as well. But we've got a tremendous amount of people here today that represent different areas of the county that all kind of would, would have some sort of benefit in, in seeing how the fire marshal can work for our county. So I don't want to stand up here and speak on behalf of the fire side of things. But as far as emergency management goes, you know, we are responsible for our emergency service districts. And, and you know, we are stretched very thin. So we can't commit ourselves to some of the things that, that our fire departments and that our office would be able to do if we had a little bit more help. And especially somebody that, that's their area of expertise. And so this is a great opportunity for our office. I know Kathy is walking around. We've put some things together. As far as emergency management and fire marshal falling under our office, I've just kind of included a small structure on how maybe I can see that happening. And then a few other options in the future coming in, like maybe someone that's over public safety. So she's passing those around. We've kind of done some research on different ways that this can be set up. But I do want to open the floor to some of our people here, especially if they have to run out.
Absolutely. And let's just come on up, speak freely.
Danielle Hale and, and Chief Clack.
Yeah. Typically, in, in this type of environment, I want you to come state whether you're for or against or neutral towards this proposition, kind of like how we do in hearings. And then give us some background as to why. And if you have any thoughts about what they've passed out, imagine we'd like to hear them. Are you for or against, as they say?
For.
You're for it. Okay. Let the record reflect. Okay.
And definitely support this. It'd be beneficial for the county and for the residents within the county to be able to have some type of fire code to watch over the construction to make sure our citizens are safe.
I'm going to get to the point that I know Dale is dying to know. No brick and mortar needed at this time. Is that correct? In other words, we wouldn't have to build another, we wouldn't have to go have a, a new office in order to make this happen. There's no, from a financial standpoint, we can house within emergency management. Is that correct?
That would be my recommendation. I've talked to many county fire marshals. Either the fire marshal serves as the emergency manager, but in most cases, they serve under the emergency manager within the emergency manager's office.
Just, you know, we talk about creating departments. There's always a little concern, how much is this going to really, you know, what's the financial impact? You know, do you need, do you need another sort of place of business, you know, a, a place to, to house? And in this case, you see this as a, under the organizational chart, under an emergency management.
That's where I see.
Okay, fair enough.
From both I've talked to.
We have a question.
Chief, how would, how would, how would you feel if Mike, my deal about, I'm support this project. Don't get me wrong. But I said, I mean, I also see maybe the code enforcement officers under your umbrella. Because they would also have the power to enforce and to, to, for code, safety, you know, that's, they're probably most of their, you know, nuisance. And it says here to keep Nuasis County clean, safe, place where wish to live, work, visit families, but also says building plans for safety. So and their, their job is really on the community for nuisance and safety and, you know, and probably at the same time for investigations if they need some. So.
They, they probably could be brought in and to assist the county fire marshal in doing investigations and especially during times of burn ban, enforcing it and assist that, that department with that.
Under the same umbrella, the emergency, the fire marshals and the code enforcement?
That would be y'all's idea, but I, I don't see why it wouldn't work. It would be a good place for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I wanted you to say. You know.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Couple questions. Are you finished?
Yeah. One more question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You know, so I've just, what I'm getting to is, you know, maybe find a home for them where they can actually do more than what they do now, you know, and utilize them in a different, in varieties. And like I said, I know a lot of stuff, you're going to be doing investigation, we're doing this, it's going to thin you out. So I think with the code enforcement under your umbrella, I mean, you have a couple of arms under you that you could help make you, you know, make the job a lot easier and go a long ways, right?
Food for thought.
Food for thought. But I do want to clarify that I'm not interested in this position. I'm just interested in creating.
Whoever, whoever gets.
That's okay. But I'm saying, but if you were the fire marshal.
He likes your position. He likes what he's doing. But yeah, who he's just talking about, if the fire marshal had these.
I think that's a good place for the public safety, and it just continues umbrella down and help expand that organization.
My question to you is the storage tanks. That's a big issue for me out there. What would a fire marshal, how could they have contributed to helping that in any way out there?
Well, the main thing is at least with a building or with a fire code, they would at least have to go through a permitting process. And you wouldn't have been blindsided.
Blinded by it.
There are some limitations on what a fire marshal can do in the industrial district. And we've been reviewing those. So if they are, if they meet certain requirements, they're not, they don't have to fall under the fire code that's adopted. But that usually doesn't apply during the construction phase, because they don't meet those requirements yet. You have to have your own fire protection. You have to have your own fire people. And most places don't have that during the construction phase.
If we'd had a fire marshal, we probably would have known that was going on.
You would have at least known it was going on. Because it, no matter what, it has to go through the permitting phase. You would have at least known.
Okay.
That would be one.
I totally support having one. I think it's long overdue for the county.
I, I believe so.
Yes.
Sorry, I walked in a little late. So I was looking at.
Go ahead.
The structure. Was there any discussion on the structure?
We just started, literally. You can ask any question. You're only in a minute into this.
Good, good. So I, I like this idea. I support the idea of fire marshal. Appreciate Chief Clack doing all this homework and bringing us to this, to, to the court and that we were able to so quickly get it before us for a discussion. I was wondering on the grants administration, is that, is that considering to move the grants department under emergency management? Or that be?
No, let me clarify on that just for a second. So that only pertains to the Office of Emergency Management. So the way I was breaking it down is, is that we're, you know, instead of being this two-person office, we're actually starting to create a structure here, like we have our I C S structure. You have your incident commander and you break down from there. So adding the fire marshal in, you know, over time, he might get more people beneath him, which would fall under that structure. And then we can hone in on our public safety side, which may over time, hopefully, get people underneath that work in that category. And then the grants and administration would just be another component of our office that is separate as well with one person over that area.
Separate from the current grants department we have.
When I'm talking about grants as it pertains to emergency management, I'm talking about like our emergency management performance grant, which covers our positions and we report to them regularly to the state. So we don't pass that on to our grants administration here. They do our, they do a lot of our theme projects and things like that. But this is very specific to our office and our daily interactions at our office. So we do grants that are outside of our grants department here.
Melissa, would you refine, when, just for, in case we adopt this, can you refine the verbiage?
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
You know?
Just so that the average. Give you an idea.
I hear you.
How it would sit in our office, just the fire marshal. I just made the other categories so that you could see that there's starting to be a division of task in our office.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, if you have the, the tiers that you have and fire marshal below, and then the other two components, I would just, I, I put an X through them just because they're not current. And I think that if we did that, we would need a much.
Bigger office.
A much bigger discussion and research done into that. And to, obviously to include any personnel would be around budget time. So I, I, I would definitely support this, this document if we were able to remove these two positions. I mean, public safety, we need to keep that in. But obviously, that, that deals with, with the sheriff. And then grants, like you said, eventually you'd like to get there. But I think we need to have some discussion of that in more detail.
It was more about giving you some sort of visual aid so that I'm not just saying, here's the emergency management coordinator, here's the fire marshal. It doesn't let you see the.
And the part that you might have missed was the code enforcement piece of it, which was public safety.
Yeah.
But we'll catch up on that later.
And I heard the commissioner saying that.
Oh, you did. Okay, good.
Definitely. I mean, you know, code enforcement's put, it can be put anywhere. It is, does it fall under the right area, under public works right now? Maybe not. But I definitely think that, you know, that's for further discussion. And I appreciate you giving this as, this look into the future, perhaps, of how you want to structure it. And by the way, I just rushed into business. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back to work.
Thank you very much. We have some other folks, Melissa. I just want to make sure that you introduce them if they want to make a comment. It's just nice to hear from different people when you're talking about something that's new. But please make sure you all look at page one, because that's the best practices look for similarly populated counties that have fire marshals. And because, you know, I asked for that information, I just want to say thank you, because it's very helpful to see how do other counties that are similarly situated address this issue. Some of them report to the sheriff.
Yes. And so I'm going to go ahead, I guess, at this time, and I'll call up the sheriff.
That'd be great.
Speak. And, and after that, we'll pull up Danielle.
That'd be great.
County Judge and Commissioner.
Yes.
The sheriff is extremely in favor of this.
Good.
And I believe that it should fall, or that it should, as the chart shows, it should fall under the emergency management coordinator.
Okay.
And speaking from my, my history with Corpus Christi P D, we had issues in the county that need arson, usually arson, that needed investigation. And we relied on the state fire marshal. And unless something has changed, and maybe Chief Clack can address this, the state fire marshal is spread so thin. I mean, and we couldn't, I forget if it was thirty or forty different counties that the deputy fire marshal for this region was in charge of. And so this is a vital, in my opinion, it's a vital need. And I'm extremely in favor of it moving forward. It would overlap, or it would definitely benefit some other things that the county's looking at right now, like the, the regulating the game rooms. One of the elements in, in that ordinance is significant participation from a fire marshal. And so as we look at other things that the county is, is addressing at this time, I think it would go hand in hand with that. I think the, the code enforcement officers is probably another discussion. It's my opinion that licensed law enforcement officers should not be reporting to a civilian. And that's the case now with them reporting to.
Public works.
Public works. And that would be the same with this. Those, any licensed peace officers that are not attached to a constable's office should fall under my supervision, the sheriff's supervision. That's, but that's another discussion. I don't know that it really relates.
Is a fire marshal, could a fire marshal be considered a peace officer? No. Okay.
If it's a one-person operation, your fire marshal does have to be a peace officer.
If it's a one-person operation.
If it's a one person.
If not, he has, he or she has to have somebody underneath him or her that is a licensed peace officer, because they have to be able to be licensed peace officer to do arson investigation.
Okay. So maybe that's something we can try to refine, everyone, a little bit, how to, but I hear you. We don't want them reporting to a civilian. Okay.
But then, wait, if.
Talking about code enforcement.
Right. But if he's saying that the fire marshal has to be a licensed peace officer, then under this scenario, it would be a licensed peace officer would have to go under the sheriff and not emergency management, which is a significant difference than what is, well, that's what, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Come on up to the, it's very important. I'm sorry, but you have to be right here on the video.
Okay. If, if you want them to be able to be an arson investigator, to do the whole realm of fire marshal's office, they can be their own police agency within themselves. I mean, we, we're a police agency at, for Annapolis Fire Department. We hold our peace officer for our fire investigators. So the office itself can do that and just be a one person operation.
Okay.
We've only had one peace officer in ours for years.
We'll kind of bifurcate then.
Wait, because I, okay, my misunderstanding, so my misunderstanding, if, if, if you're saying that, and I think we're saying we want to have a licensed peace officer so they can do everything, right? Isn't that what you're saying? So, and then didn't we just say that if it, if it is a licensed peace officer, they should not report to a civilian? Or the sheriff did, I thought.
Well, they'll be their own organization underneath the emergency manager's office. It's just like a stair step.
But wouldn't they be reporting to the emergency manager?
So can I bump in?
Yes, please do.
That's the way I read this. Maybe I'm not reading it right.
It sounds, what it sounds like to me is, as far as I understand, is that it could still work under the Office of Emergency Management. But as far as it pertains to arson investigations, that would have to be reported through the sheriff's office. So it's just that one component that would have to be under the sheriff's office. And all of the other responsibilities, reporting responsibilities of the fire marshal seems like it could still happen for emergency management. And this is just a guess. I'm, I'm.
So there might have to be a dual reporting, dual reporting function or a dotted line or, and y'all can work out the details. I mean, just, but in reading this, it indicates we want to put it under the emergency management that reports to the county judge. Well, that's all civilian, unless the judge has gotten a peace officer's license I'm not familiar with. And then what I thought I heard them say, so if, if it can be dual, I don't, I, we all, I think we all support this concept, and the devil's in the details always. But let's make sure we do do it right. I mean, if it has, because we want that fire, or I want that fire marshal to be able to do everything that we want them to do. And so if that means some of it has to report under the sheriff, because what you're saying is it's a sole agency, but it's not really, because it's still under this, it's still saying it reports up to the emergency manager who's not a peace officer. But maybe, but, but I'm not, but tell me if that's wrong. It's okay. I mean, come correct me. I'm just trying to figure it out.
I'm going to tell you, it's a. I'm going to tell you it's a um it's a very gray area because it's no different than a uh police chief reporting to a city manager. Ev- eventually, you're reporting to somebody that is not uh a peace officer.
Okay, that's a good analogy.
At at some point in there, you're going to have to report. It's just when you put law enforcement underneath that that don't have an umbrella to report to that you've got to watch your deal. It's the same thing with the firefighters. So Texas State Commission says that a certified firefighter cannot report to a non-certified firefighter. Uh it's against the law in the state of Texas.
Makes sense.
Oh, so uh you have to be certified or have somebody certified there when you do that. So that's like when we run mutual aid with other departments, we always send a chief to a mutual aid company that doesn't have certified people. That way, we make sure there there's still a proper chain of command there.
Okay.
Eventually, you all report to somebody that's not certified. I I report to a commi- uh five-panel commissioners that um y'all appoint.
Could hire or fire you.
None of them are certified, but by law, I have to report to them.
Gotcha. Okay, alright.
And then I just want to say real quick that in emergency management, we wear a lot of hats and so I have always considered becoming a peace officer. Um it's just that we don't have a night program here in Corpus, so um but that's something that can easily be done in our office. We just have to commit the time to it. Um and then it opens up a lot of doors for our office as well.
That's an excellent point. I was thinking you shouldn't have given me that idea. Do they take fifty-three-year-old women? Because that's I'm ready. I mean, I think that that's an extra i- i- it's it's a layer that we should consider and I'm glad you brought it up because I hadn't really thought about the the reporting pe- piece of it. I'm also looking at Cameron County and I might ask you all to dig into Cameron. They have an interesting setup. Uh that they do that they're reporting to the E M C, not the sheriff, so maybe y'all could do a little investigative work there. Call them up and and see what's how their fire marshal is is working. Is he a peace officer? How did they handle the arsons? You know, because Cameron's super close to us in population.
Judge.
Yes.
If um and I'm not sure if maybe that's how it's 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 uh it's done in other counties.
Uh huh.
But um if you require the fire marshal to be a peace officer, and obviously he's not under an agency, police officer or law enforcement agency, they have to be sponsored. Their license has to be sponsored by another agency. So uh maybe that's who they're reporting to.
Good point.
So.
We know that you will lawyer this up for us.
We know that y'all will figure it out. I think the important piece of today is what is the will of the court? Do we like this concept of having a fire marshal and what are the purposes of public safety that they would espouse? And and is this something that could be beneficial? And then do you see it under emergency management? That's kind of where we're all headed. Um I'm going to ask the hard question about dollars here in a minute. That's the last question we're going to ask. But Danielle Hale is here and she, of course, is the emergency management director for the Port of Corpus Christi. But she comes to us from a lot of experience from from the state of Texas. And so I thought maybe you should give us the and of course, Oasis County, but think about it broader and talk to us a little bit about how the state perceives this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh there's a reason that statutorily allows counties of this size to have a county fire marshal. And and to me, that seems that 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 established that as the absolute best practice. So San Patricio County is allowed to do the things that they do because they're immediately adjacent to Oasis County. So as a rural county, I think it's probably the standard. Um little bit of background, uh almost ten years ago, we developed a countywide um community wildfire protection plan. Um that was that was awesome. I mean, that was a great opportunity for the county to partner. They they received the the grants to bring all the fire departments in this in the room together to actually collaborate countywide. That had that had never happened before. And that was one of the key findings from that effort was the need for a county fire marshal. More of those like-type activities where we're able to bring them under the roof and and start coordinating and collaborating with common type issues that are affecting um not just the rural fire departments in the emergency services district, but also the municipal fire departments that are providing um services outside county. Uh you look at how in Oasis County funds fire protection versus other counties. Uh we're real heavy in E M S because of the hospital district. We're very light on providing any kind of supplement to fire services. We had large areas throughout Oasis County that essentially are uncovered, which we were able to work through that through mutual aid agreements, contracts, things like that. So that we kind of did away with the no man's land, but it's still um a huge effort that needs to be done. And emergency management has championed that over the last handful of years. Um but that's within all of the other challenges and distractions that are occurring within that department. Um so I wanted I had a couple of quick points that I wanted to bring out, just kind of historical reference. Um back in two thousand fourteen, we had a vessel fire on the um uh Antonio Fire right near the Harbor Bridge. At the time, I served with Oasis County. I had gone to a port commission meeting at that time um to help support the efforts that were going on to to better collaborate with regards to marine firefighting. But there was another agenda item that was there, which was hurricane preparedness. So I just stuck around, you know, to hear what the port's um plan was for hurricane season. And one of the commissioners had asked the former director of operations um about collaboration with uh port users. And so he said, well, we those that are tenants to the port, you know, we work directly with on their plans. And he said, no, what about the other folks? So these large industries that um are in our industrial district and others that that um are not on port-owned property. And he said, well, in Oasis County, emergency management does that. Of course, I was the emergency management coordinator and I was like, what? I was like, um, we do involve. And so, you know, and I'm I know Melissa still is heavily involved with the L A P C and those activities. But it was presented as such that those industries were providing plans to the county and the county was reviewing the plans. I think in the context from hurricane, that's probably a little bit closer to reality, but not for the other big plans. Those go to the state. That goes to state regulators, federal regulators. And so we all work together and I work closely with Melissa to try to stay up to speed with all of the different plans that are out there. But that is a known gap that's out there. I I think that our large industry, I don't think, I know that our large industries have excellent plans. Um it's not the large ones that I'm ever concerned about. It's the ones that fall kind of in between, you know, the very small business and the very large business. There's a gap there where we don't have the 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 depth or or sometimes the authorities really prevent some of that. Um so that was kind of, you know, my first introduction to the port, I think, really that many years ago. And 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 Judge, I don't believe you. Were you on the court or the commission at that time? So that was that really started a lot of dialogue between Oasis County and the port, like right at that moment. I remember having emails with Tyner and I said, we've got to, we've got to get involved. We've got to make sure that it's clear what the county can't do and can do either statutorily, you know, whatever, plus just the bandwidth to be able to accomplish those tasks. Um I think plan reviews, as commission uh uh Chief Clack had mentioned, uh for new construction, I think that's super important. Um uh making sure that they're compatible uh with existing fire uh resources that are available. Uh that we're designing fire protection strategies that makes sense for our community, that's compatible with the water supply that's in the area. So when you look into the some of the um the more rural areas, water, access to water is a challenge. Uh so making sure that those things are done. So even though they may not be enforcing a fire code on a um commercial facility who meets the requirements for fire brigades and whatnot, on the front end, making sure that we have good design. And again, making sure that the fire departments are engaged and the correct fire personnel are involved in that evaluation. Training is a big issue. We've got fire departments throughout our region, so not just in Oasis County, um that are struggling to receive training. How do we get the funding to do that? That takes a lot of time and energy to administer those grants or to seek those funding opportunities where some of our fire departments, they just don't, I mean, they're struggling just to keep operating, much less administer some kind of state or federal grant program. That's really difficult for them. And so I see this as an opportunity to to help expand training and and standardization across the fire departments. They want it. They're asking for it. They're seeking those opportunities. And then last but not least is major incident response. Any of our major incidents that we have anywhere across the county, we are going to have numerous uh local, state and federal authorities that are overlapping. You've got to have strong incident command, strong incident management and a and a strong relationship with the appropriate authorities having jurisdiction, be it the city or cities and the county and the county judge and her responsibility as emergency management director. Um that has always been an area that I've been working hard. I've been in emergency management for, we're pushing twenty years now. That has been something that we've continued to work towards in the way of training for incident command and national incident management system. Uh when you look at your how your county departments are kind of spread out, um any one major incident is going to cross over numerous jurisdictions. Who's in charge? Who is going to manage that that actually understands how to run operations? It's easy for the judge to say, well, constitutionally, the buck, you know, the buck stops here and that's great. But that doesn't mean that we have the operational capacity to make those.
Or the expertise.
Right, exactly. So if you're making decisions about what kind of mitigation measures to apply to something that's on fire, Chief Clack's the only one in this room that I would say has any qualification to do that. And then your management structure goes to support that individual. Um but again, your fire marshal kind of helps the county kind of, okay, makes the decision, okay, under these conditions, working with the fire department. That all has to be worked out ahead of time, but to say, if these conditions exist, the fire marshal's my point person and they work for me versus a fire department that doesn't work for the county.
Plus, you know, Danielle had been giving a lot of thought to our hazard mitigation plan lately. It's funny what, you know, was not on my radar is now front and center with me as we make the updates for the purposes of our mitigation uh grant opportunities. And uh they told us the G L O, you know, don't pay attention to drought or wildfire. Well, that's because the dollars are all focused on wind and water. But as I'm reading the hazard mitigation plan and I see everything in California, all I think about right now is drought and wildfire. And as we see a hundred and seventy-four counties year after year get labeled drought, you know, conditions by the state of Texas, that's another positive reason we haven't really spoken about, to make certain that we're addressing everything we can do when we do get designated as a drought um, you know, in in an emergency drought situation. And and sadly, we know that these things are are commonplace. And so I think just rereading our hazard mitigation plan makes me say, I am a strong advocate as the emergency management director. I'm not just saying it as a workshop, you know, I want to hear everybody's opinion. I think that this is my recommendation in that constitutional capacity that we that we promote this um this department. There is um a lot of concern as well on the chemical side, that we don't have the right communication. Maybe they have the best plans in the world, but if it's going to fall on our shoulders here and we don't have a copy of those plans and we haven't had any interaction, I'm afraid just what you said, that gap is going to make us look is going to make us lose time. And then time is going to have an effect on saving property and possibly lives, depending on what the scenario is.
I definitely think that that's what you're working towards, is narrowing that that gap in that time. You have amazing plans. You have amazing responders. You have, um I'd put us up against um pretty much anybody when it comes to the tools we have available available to us and how we can apply those. That's not where the gap is. Our ability to respond is not a gap. Our ability to do it as efficiently as we can and to communicate those activities, that's what we're trying to narrow. The success of our incident response happens well before the incident. We do not have enough emergency management personnel in this region to be able to narrow that gap and make sure that folks that need to know what the plans are, understand what those plans are. I go out to a facility and and I don't I know enough about fire protection systems to get me in trouble. But I go out and I look at something and I'm like, that doesn't make sense. Like, I know what how big a fire truck is and I know it's got to drive through a gate and come through and and hook up and it's got to get to water supply. And when those things don't happen quick, that's where I start looking at where do why why are we like this? And some of these, you just see it's it just evolved over time. You know, our our capabilities have changed, the technologies have changed. But it now it still takes a lot of ingenuity on the on behalf of the fire departments to make these systems work. And they have adapters and they have pre-plans and they do those things, but we can do better. And we just need more, we need more people in the field to be able to do that. Um between Oasis County and the city of Corpus Christi and the Port Authority, you have five full-time emergency managers. That is total capacity of full-time emergency management in this region. Most others are multiple-hatted. They're they're full-time police chiefs or fire chiefs. And then you look at other rural or urban counties in the state, it it's it's not proportional and the the risk has changed. So I I'm in support of this. Um I I think that um, you know, the the need has been identified for years. Um I agree, believe belongs in emergency management. It has to have a very strong, close-working relationship with your law enforcement if you're going to get into investigations and arson um with the sheriff's office. It it can't be successful without his full support. But I think it can be successful leaving it within emergency management. And I think it gives you more opportunities as a court to enhance your preparedness activities by doing it that way.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um I'll open it up for for more questions. But of course, the big question that I know this court's going to have to address and I don't see it in here and that's okay. We can um continue to have the dialogue. But Melissa, have you given some thought as to an appropriate budget that this would um that that this would entail, given that we're not in the middle of a budget?
We've discussed what what an appropriate salary would be.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'd have to look at what type of equipment this person is going to need to be able to successfully do their job and and make the adjustments to the budget from there. But as far as the salary goes, I think we've come with come up with with what is an appropriate salary.
And would it be the will of the court? Is there enough interest so I could direct, we could direct Melissa to share that information with Dale and create a a county judge, Dale, Melissa, so that we can really, okay, so I'm going to give you that that direction. And Dale, obviously, this is where you and I have to really work together. This is um this is part of the woes, right, of government. We have a balanced budget. We're proud of our balanced budget. And then all of a sudden, we see a need, right? We see a very important need and that needs has to be addressed in the middle of our fiscal cycle, possibly, you know. But um but nevertheless, uh there's opportunities here. Uh there is a really great grant. I just want you all to know that um um I'm going to call it a bridge grant that I'm going to pursue. Maria is already familiar with it. Uh I don't think it's a secret. It's a Plains All-American has a very strong giving grant program where I think you can apply up to two million dollars. And my could my thought would be, could they, could we apply for this grant to bridge the gap for this year? In other words, the responsibility will be ours in a new budget uh process and workshop. But if we need X dollars now to begin this office, wouldn't that be a good use of those funds? And that's what we call bridge gap funding and and it's done all the time, but you got to find the right funding source. This particular one came to me by a flyer and uh and they because of Halo Flight. They had given through this granting opportunity, Halo Flight had received some funds. The requirement is that it's emergency response and and then it's up to two million dollars of giving. If you're not familiar with Plains All-American, they are uh an incredible um midstream company. They have a tremendous pipeline activities. They also have terminal activities and they are very active in our area. And this is something they're dedicated to and that's that's first response. So those are, that's an idea. Maria is is looking into it, working on it. It's just a thought. There's no, you know, they're probably going to go, what? You know, now they're going to hear about that I said it in court. But they're going to be one of ten that we pursue. But I think this court needs to make some decisions about, is this worth it? And I think it is.
Well, I'm all in. I think it's long overdue, like I said, but what I'd like to see is kind of a breakdown. Um salary, equipment that you said, and I'm assuming a vehicle.
Oh, good point.
Yes, so I'd like to see that breakdown and see what it's actually going to cost.
Okay, and I'd like to work with invite uh Chief Clack as far as equipment goes, because I think he's got a better idea of on the fire side of things, what type of equipment a fire marshal might need um so that we can make a a great, accurate um estimate for you guys.
And the only thing I think to close on this is Chief, you represent, or at least I was able to attend an event where I saw lots of police, uh lots of fire chiefs. And and I know you've had an opportunity to discuss. I think it's worth ending with the positive note that it's not just your opinion, that this is a representative opinion. Do you want to share that?
That's correct, Judge. Um at our county-wide fire chiefs meeting, we had a unanimous support for this, that all the fire chiefs supported it, including the city of Robstown, because they're having to do things that they really shouldn't be doing out in the county because they're the only agency around that area. So this would help them not have to reach outside their boundaries to do that. And I think this could help other cities also. Um Port Aransas currently uh contracts with somebody in Aransas Pass to do their work.
Excellent, excellent point.
Uh fix that. The other thing that this is going to help is it's going to create that liaison position in the emergency management office during uh major emergencies like hurricanes and things. Because right now, I'm that liaison. And when I come up to the courthouse for during an emergency like that, my boards want to know why I'm not in the field watching my people.
Understood.
That's going to fix that gap and give us a true liaison that represents the whole county.
Understood. Well, as I said, as someone brought up, constitutionally, we have two charges as county judges, all two hundred and fifty-four of us. One is to maintain the fiscal nature of. 254 of us, one is to maintain the fiscal nature of your county and by producing a balance, by producing a budget. And the second thing, and there's no order here, because it's probably first and foremost, emergency management, and that is I'm the Emergency Management Director. And I think that public safety requires that we take this issue up now. There was one line here, it says, "All of this is a result of, you know, experiencing rapid growth." There are always reasons to say, well, we can wait, great idea, but we can wait. Public safety should never wait. Public safety has no timetable, it's only the now. And I think that you have brought it to us in the now, and it's our responsibility to address it. I am sorry that we couldn't make it all fit so nice and neat, you know, in our budget workshop and process, that's always desirable, but in this case, it's the interest of Oasis County that needs to be placed first in our minds. So with that, Commissioners, I think we're ready for the dollars and presentation. Dale, is that okay?
One more thing, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Good thing about the code enforcement, you know, that it's not gonna cost any more money, because they're already.
That's correct.
So we're not gonna look at it more dollars there either. I mean, they're just gonna be, they're just gonna be transferred over.
And there's several tasks that we can alleviate from the ESDs that the Fire Marshal would be responsible, that give our firefighters more opportunity to do public outreach or to work more shifts or just to rest a little bit more.
That might be good to put in here as well. Okay, are there any other questions or thoughts for discussion? Okay, hearing none, I want to commend all of you and thank you for the time. Danielle, coming over from your job, Kathy for your diligence in putting this together, and Chief Clack, this is something that's been brewing on your mind for several years and sometimes the timing is right. So I'm really grateful to you and all the folks that helped you. And Sheriff, thanks for weighing in, we certainly want law enforcement's support. And I just wanna kinda do an all-call to all small cities that are within Oasis County. If you have an interest in making a comment about this, if you'd be so good as to call our office or reach out to Melissa Mungia. I think this is something that we wanna make sure is supported by everybody, but I can tell you that when all Fire Chiefs get together and have a unanimous support for a concept, that's an indicator that it's the right thing to do. Hearing no further discussion, at 11:13 a.m., I'm gaveling us out of the workshop, gaveling us back into normal and regular order, and we have a consent agenda to discuss, and I believe it's.
Judge, I would move approval of the consent agenda unless someone has some to pull.
I need H.
H.
Out.
To table.
Okay, I'll get a motion in just one moment. Are there any others? Hearing none, I'd like a motion for, to accept consent agenda items, A is in Apple, all the way through T is in Tom, and.
Accept H.
Forgive me, with the exception of H. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. I'd like a motion to table H.
Motion to table H.
I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Michael, when are we tabling that too, for the purposes of the clerk?
To November 6.
I would amend my motion to table till November 6.
And it's accepted. Motion and second, you got it. Thank you. All right, coming into the order of the Agenda Regular 4A1, this is discuss and consider adopting an order allowing online auctions for tax foreclosure sales, tax resales, and providing for rules governing online auctions. And thank you for being so patient. We have Paul Chapa.
Judge, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
For clarity's sake, are we going to then do Agenda Item 3, which is discuss and consider the creation of an Oasis County Fire Marshal, or do we need to table that one also, just because it's on the agenda?
I think that we can vote on it, if you'd like.
Whatever you wanna do, I just, I didn't.
You know.
I'm happy to make a motion that we, do we consider the creation of an Oasis County Fire Marshal?
Pending the details of.
Right, pending the details and bring that back to.
Financial impact details, how's that?
Correct.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you don't mind, just make sure that qualification gets in there.
Just a reminder, the 11:30, it's already 11:50.
Yes, it is, but Paul is.
Paul's quick.
Rapid.
Commissioners, we will go very quickly. Thank you for your time this morning, always good to be here. We have, we're here today seeking approval of an online auction sale process for your tax foreclosure property. I've got a team here, if you want to discuss in detail. The proposed order has been reviewed by your county attorney's office and it's been approved as to form and substance. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We have a brief presentation, if you want to hear about the process and how it will work. I can bring up one of them.
Let's do something first, let's get motion in a second.
I trust you can help us all move.
Right, but I do want to, we'll get you as much in as we can. I've got a motion and a second, and now we'll call, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and now I'll call for the discussion and that way you feel good that we're gonna move on this action item. I think the big thing is, is come tell us, come espouse the great things and why it's gonna do better things for our county fiscally.
Let me bring up Rick Haas. Rick has been.
Sounds good.
28 years, he's our chief operating officer, graduated Texas A&amp;I University, the next day started working for our law firm.
Wow.
Rick, come on up, be very brief and explain the on-sale auction process.
Okay, great. Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. About two years ago, the law passed and changed, allowed for us to move our online sales to, or property tax sales to an online platform. Mr. Chapa tasked my department to really find a solution, you know, to make this work for his clients. And so we looked at developing it in-house, we have a very large technical staff in San Antonio that does stuff like this. And then we also looked out in the market for vendors that were doing this, and come to find out, there were a lot of other states that had been doing this for several years. And so we found three or four of them that were very major companies that were doing these online sales, and we interviewed all of them, spent about a year going through that process, trying to pick the best one for us to partner with. And we came up with Real Auction. You know, Real Auction is more than just a technology company, they're really a very large organization and a service organization that's wrapped around the technology. You know, this is not just a website that's selling Beanie Babies, it's actually a judicial foreclosure process, and that's all they do. They've actually foreclosed on over a million pieces of property, judicial foreclosures. And so they had gone through this process, obviously, a bunch of times. We've done the process manually, tens of thousands of times a year for, you know, going on 40 years now, but we'd never done it online. And so we did decide to partner with Real Auction. Probably one of the biggest benefits, Judge, in reference to, you know, finances, it doesn't cost you anything. The purchasers pay a fee when they, you know, when they bid on the property, and if they win, they pay, that's what really pays for the services, so there's no cost to the county. Obviously, it expands your market. You know, right now, you physically have to show up on the first Tuesday of the month, you know, to bid on these properties. And just so happens that that's happening at practically every county in the state. And there are a lot of commercial buyers out there that literally have to hire runners to be at this county, this county, and this county, so they can bid on these properties. Well, obviously, as the more of these things go online, you can bid on all of them from your couch at the house, literally. In reference to cost, again, there's also a lot of time savings with the actual Sheriff's Department. We've integrated our system in with Real Auction's system, and so all that data flows from one to the other. And so when the sheriff is ready to conduct the sale, they literally are at that point just clicking a button. Real Auction's got clients in other states where a single officer is selling hundreds of these things a day and never leaving their desk. And so it's a big time saver, you know, the technology has made it to where it's more efficient, you know, there's less prone for error. In addition to that, you know, this has got a full accounting background on the backend. We will spend a lot of time with your, either your treasurer or your controller here, to make sure that they are comfortable with the flow of money and the funds from, you know, one place to the other, but it is basically a robust accounting package on the backend. I guess probably something, you know, that Real Auction and the other vendors that we talked to, although they've done this in other states, each state has different laws, different rules, no one does it the same, not a single state, you know, no two single states in the union do this the same way. So we spent, I'd say, a good two months with our lawyers, literally going page by page, FAQ by FAQ, making sure that this system comports to Texas law. And like I said, I think it's the only one in the state right now that's gone through that review process and we're pretty proud of it. Like I mentioned, they are integrated with our system. That company behind the website, they have a full-blown 24-by-7 call center that if you have a question, if a bidder's got a question, you know, how do I go about doing this, you know, they can answer questions. And what I really like is every single winner gets an outbound call. So you log on, you win a piece of property, somebody from Real Auction literally calls you that day and said, okay, congratulations, you just won. Now you need to go through steps 2, 3, 4, and 5, to sort of walk people through, because, you know, we found you've got two different types of bidders at these things. You've got the professionals that do it for quasi-libing and they do it all the time. Then you've got the person that's just buying a vacant lot that's next door to them, they're only gonna do it once in their entire life and that's it. And so they do require some handholding. And so Real Auction, along with our law firm, is there to do that handholding. Data security, I won't spend a whole lot of time in this, but PCI and SOC, it really just has to do with security of the data, your data. Data centers, more technology stuff, I know you're in a hurry. Customized documentation, there is a document generation engine that the sheriffs will be able to use, they can take their own forms, their own documents, and be able to generate that out of the system without having to have clerical staff do that document generation. Accounting and auditing, I've already gone through. Proven and tested, like I said, they've sold over a million properties on this platform. And basically, what we did is we took their platform, made it comply with Texas law, and that's really about it. Judge, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Y'all doing this somewhere else? Y'all doing this in Victoria? Do you have the same process in Victoria?
We have implemented in Victoria and Orange County, I believe Galveston goes up next month. And one additional thing, Judge, if you were to actually pass this order, the order has to be filed at the Real Property Records for 90 days before we can actually conduct an online sale. So there is that 90-day period, and we take those 90 days to work with your Sheriff's Office and your auditor or controller to do the implementation.
And just double-check with Real Auction, Tyner, I'm thinking about our ADA accessibility here, just to make sure, I know that they've got all the compliance, we talked about it, but just, we'd like to know, because I'm proud of the fact that we've made great strides in ADA accessibility, and we want to know what it is, particularly, because we're gonna report that to the Department of Justice. If y'all will please just coordinate with Tyner, but you're welcome to say something.
Oh, no, I was gonna say that we are ADA compliant.
Right, okay. It's very important that we, it's one more thing that we're doing in the effort of modernization, we're not compromising, we're enhancing what we already have, because I don't really think we have an ADA-compliant auction on the courthouse steps, right? The answer is no, we don't. But we're gonna get it, and that's why this is, I've been such a proponent for online auctions, but hey, the bottom line is, I know there's no promises, but historically, hasn't the data revealed that counties receive more money because they widen the net to greater buyers?
Yes, ma'am. That, and there's another added value, where you really get a more transparent process. You know, we found that.
Very important.
That the professional bidders, it's very easy for them to sort of collude with each other.
Yes.
And by broadening that market and taking it online.
Yeah.
It not completely wipes that out, it really makes it much more difficult.
And thanks to the county attorney's office, because we drove them crazy and said, this is a high priority, and they made that happen, because there was a lot of legal, you know, hurdles to make certain that our policies were changed. So, really wonderful. We have a motion and a second, Commissioners. In the interest of time, of course, I want to hear any of your questions. Will you also make yourselves available to Commissioners after today, if they have more interest in how this works?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you, thank you for the innovation.
Judge, can I just do a real quick motion to table number 6 for the November 6 meeting? That's the.
That's correct. We're waiting on legal, I have a motion to table number 6 for legal purposes, and I've got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same.
Tyner, just make sure that is back on for November 6.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tyner, I think we're tabling the next one too, aren't we?
That's correct, we need to do some.
Go ahead and take a motion, we'll get as many as we can. She's, I've got a motion and I'll second, and all those in favor of tabling number 7, again, we're getting, we're awaiting legal advisories for table, for number 6 and number 7. 7, by the way, for the interest of the public, deals with fiber optics and the laying of such lines in a particular neighborhood. All those in favor of tabling to November 6 signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, I'm gonna recess us out, just for the audience, one more time, it's 11:20, I guess 3 on the recess. We are recessing for the purposes of revealing a plaque on Floor 1, we invite you to come down with us, and it's an important designation that Oasis County has received on several of their courts, to be designated by the Judicial Council as a Court of Excellence. And so we are recessing for that 11:30 ceremony and we'll be back in the courtroom as soon as that concludes.
Bam, let's go.
I'm back in at noon, I'm gaveling us back in at 12:00 p.m. on the dot.
5, 6, and 7.
And I have a motion right now to table number 5. Do I have a second?
Until November 6.
Until November 6, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And again, the reason is, is our HR director is out this week and we need her input. Who seconded? Commissioner Gonzalez. And Dale, if you have any input for, before November 6, let's, you and I meet on this separately.
I've got input now, but you already voted on it.
Okay, well, the reason.
Because we've already closed the reports, this can't be done.
Say it again.
We've already closed our payroll reports going in this next fiscal year, we've already reported the payroll and the vacation time to the entities we are required to report to, so we cannot suspend 1819.
Well, as they say, there you are.
So, then we're not tabling it?
Um, but I mean, it.
It's table till next, I mean, it's table, so.
It's not gonna change the issue on November 6, but you're saying, you're giving us the heads up, that there's not really a decision to be made.
Right.
But you're gonna give us.
We can, but we've already closed the 1819 reports, so.
Okay, so we're gonna, give us all the details, okay? Let's give us all the details on November the 6th. Okay, I'm gonna go back in time and go back to number 4, and then just for your housekeeping, we're gonna go from 4 to number 8. So 4 is, was tabled, and now we're back on, and it's just an update as to where we are on the county four yard, and when we last left this story, we were doing, come on up, we were, we're looking on the interior, that's where we left. We have a building, we have Ortiz Construction working on some of the issues to fix some of the problems, and we're now moving towards the interior. Give us a, is that good?
That's correct, Judge.
Give us a little back down where we are. I know, I'm sorry, you probably didn't know where we were getting so close here.
That's fine. Judge, just to give you an update, Ortiz Construction is still working on the windows.
Okay.
We have some correspondence from them saying that we're gonna be getting the windows tomorrow, so hopefully within the week, they can get them installed.
What do you anticipate the timeline to finish the exterior, so we can start working on the interior?
The interior, well, the exterior.
Are windows considered?
The windows probably by next, hopefully by next week, right, Commissioner? Hopefully by next week.
Okay.
And right after that, we already have proposals for the water, the sewer, the electrical, and we're getting the proposals to do the interior, so.
And so what do you expect your timeline to look like? When can we have a tour?
For the final?
Yeah, and you can guess.
I'm estimating about a couple of months, Judge.
So maybe early January?
Early January.
Okay, all right. What else do you want to update us on here? Parking lot, fencing?
Parking lot, I mean, the same thing, Judge, we have, we'll get a proposal to do the parking lot from contractors, and we'll get those proposals to get that completed.
Okay, and so you're gonna bring all that to court, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
So estimated timeline, I would say by early January, we should be completed with So estimated timeline, I would say by early January, we should be completed with the project.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez, do you have anything to add on that report?
No, some more than the fencing, but I'm in-
And the fencing, just to remind us, is going to go the entire perimeter?
Entire perimeter.
Okay, and that comes from your budget? From your budget? And the parking lot, Juan, will be brought by, how are we going to do it? By RFP or?
On the parking lot, Judge, I'm estimating that if we do, our staff does the base material and prep it up. And then we can just get somebody to do the concrete work and the-
And that'll save us money?
Yes, ma'am. And then we can also do the striping on it too, so. So we'll try to do most of the work.
Okay, so you feel like your office has a good handle now on this project? And we're back on track and-
Yes, ma'am.
And Ortiz is cooperating as far as, they're not going to come back to us and say, we owe them more money, are they?
My understanding is that, once the windows are done, we'll do kind of like a quick walkthrough. Not say quick, but we'll do a walkthrough with Ortiz, and then that way we can go ahead and release them from their contract.
Yeah, how much are we up to right now?
My understanding, we're up to about $76,000 total.
How much more you think it's going to be?
Based on the architect's estimate, Commissioner, we're probably, it was about $140,000. But hopefully we can try and minimize that cost.
And I was wondering, did we get a ruling on who signs the contracts?
Lourdes. Yes. Basically, the Commissioners' Court is the only body that can bind a contract. An individual commissioner cannot bind it, or any other elected official, unless there's statutory authority to do that.
So what I'm thinking, Juan, is, is that if there's, I signed a contract in March for the original $49,000. I'm guessing you need to bring back to court the rest of this, because I don't have a record in my file of anything else. And I think it's important for Commissioner, I mean, for Lourdes County Attorney to, what do you think? Is that-
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that Juan does visit with Michael, Michael Robinson, our purchasing agent, because there are policies involved that, there's a certain process that is followed if it's less than $50,000.
Okay.
And so, you know, that way you'll follow the process, because under the $50,000, you go through a PO as opposed to-
Okay, here comes Michael to-
Which that process comes to the court for approval.
Okay.
Anyway, and then if it's, if it's construction and we needed an actual contract, then that definitely needs to come back to court for approval.
Yeah, so-
Before any work is being done, regardless if it's less than $50,000.
And was that done on the original contract? Was that done?
Yeah, the original contract came to court.
Okay, but there, I saw a contract where Jack signed it, and it was before it came in here. And so that's what I'm asking, because I think everybody needs to follow the rules. I mean, we don't get anybody up here in trouble. So that's my question, I just want to know that.
Saw a contract that I signed?
Yes.
Can I have a copy of it?
I think it was the original $50,000.
I think from looking at the document, and I'm going to be looking at the document, it's the same document that the judge in the court had already approved and the judge had signed.
Okay, the one I saw had that signature, so.
It does, no, he does have, but I'm not sure if it was-
I just want to make sure it's the judge signing it, not us.
Yeah, it's the same one, but the judge did sign it.
After the fact, from what I saw. The one I saw only had that signature on it. What I signed was the ratification of the $50,000 that came to court. What I have not done is anything after that. And that's what I'm saying, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that the court knows, hey, this is the total project, right? Because all we've authorized is 50, but we now know we've spent 80, and we're going to go to 140. So I'd like for y'all to bring it back so that we can have clarity what the rest of the money entails. Because that way we know the contractor understands what his scope of work is and what the price is.
I think above the $50,000 was for design, and it's not construction.
That's correct, Judge. The remaining, after the $49,000-
Right.
The rest of it, it's engineering or architectural, geotechnical, and then there's a PO in there for the septic tank, to put in a new septic tank.
But if it's going to cost $140,000, and we've only authorized 50, engineer, all that stuff can't be 90.
With the engineering, it was $12,000 if I'm mistaken, and then the septic system is another 12 or 10. And then the geotech was another 8,000, so I think it was totaling to like $76,000 total, total spent.
And that needed to come to court.
Okay. So I think we're clear that these things should come to court, and we want to make sure that the projects are well-managed, and that's, it protects you, protects us, protects the contractor. It's a good practice.
Yes, Judge, and Commissioners, anything that we do from Public Works, we coordinate with purchasing to make sure that we're following all the requirements that we need.
Anything anybody do-
If we need, no, I'm saying from Public Works. And if we need to bring something to court, we'll bring it to court. And if it's something under the-
Go ahead, Michael.
As we, as we covered in a recent court, when we changed the rule for the 25 to 50K purchases, that those no longer required, are required to come to court. That's specifically on purchase orders where there is no contract required. If there is a contract required, regardless of the dollar value, we'll be bringing that to here to court.
Exactly. That's what we wanted to make sure. Okay.
But you know, let me just say one thing. You know, Juan, there's no reason why y'all can start now on the inside. Everything's finished except for the windows. They already put the frames on there. It's been ready for two weeks, how come y'all haven't started?
Commissioner, kind of like I mentioned to you last week, I would prefer for Ortiz Construction to be out of the way. That way, that way, that way, that way, when-
Nobody, listen to me, okay? Nobody is in there, nobody's in the way. They're not working, they're finished.
Well, I understand.
They're waiting for the window.
He's in charge of the product.
I understand, Commissioner, but-
It was ready two weeks ago.
I'm just saying that if our, if we hire somebody and somebody goes and does, or some, they're going to say that somebody scratched this, or somebody broke the window, or something like that. I'd rather have everybody out of the way, so that way I can bring in the new contractors.
Well, I think y'all just dragging your feet on that one.
Commissioner, uh-
Sorry to say that, but y'all could have been already doing stuff.
Okay, well, I think we're good. We have an update. And look, like anything, when it's done, it'll feel good to have it done. So let's get a report on the positive aspects of finishing it, and bring me whatever documentation that I need, okay?
I think you've been real ugly.
I'm not being ugly, but you, his Public Works-
Show me the form that I-
I've got it in my office, and I will show it to you. It was for Ortiz, I will show it to you.
Not before the judge signed it.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on, because really what's in the best interest of all of us is that we, we've really delineated what the process is, and you guys are in charge of making sure that it's enforced. Okay? All right. All right, number eight is discuss and consider updating the routing checklist for agenda items. And I believe, I was going to say, I believe, here's Margaret and Monica, and tell me what we need to know here.
Okay, well, we made a few changes, of course, just something at the top, the date for Commissioners' Court. That way, you know, the routing sheet will-
Margaret, can you explain to the court, I'm sorry, what a routing checklist is?
The routing checklist, whenever someone has an item on the agenda, then they need papers to be turned in, contracts or whatever, anything that needs to be signed, even resolutions or proclamations. You attach a routing sheet to it, and it says specifically what to do. The first person, I'll read the first one. And this, the first one is one of the changes. The originating office, say, Public Works, and attachments of Office of Commissioners' Court Administration, those papers need to be to my office two days prior to court. So court's on Wednesday, I should have gotten everyone's paperwork on Monday. That way it's in the folder, it's ready for the county clerk. So whenever they come in on Wednesday morning, I'm not scrambling and calling people and asking them, you didn't bring me your paperwork, and the county clerk's here ready for the paperwork. Which has happened numerous times. So if we can change it to where people will bring me that stuff two days prior to court, we don't have to scramble Wednesday morning. The next one is before Commissioners' Court commences, I give the information to the county clerk. Let's just say Emma or someone comes in, I hand her the folder, she's got all the paperwork after that, and I sign off on both of those. The next one is after court adjournment, the county clerk, and this is not a change. This is on the, on the previous one also that was approved in Commissioners' Court. After court adjournment, the county clerk will return the contracts and resolutions to the county judge's office for signature. And here recently, that has changed, and they're not going to the judge's office anymore after court.
Excuse me, I am the county clerk, and I can tell you where they're going. Judge Canales signs them the same day. She will take them in when they go into executive session, which works better, because then I can attest them that day. And in the past, unfortunately, I wouldn't get them the same day. Sometimes I wouldn't get the, right, the signed documents from prior county judge until late Friday, or even on Monday. And so what happens is, we start getting calls from everyone waiting for their signed contract. So what I worked with you when you first got into office was, hey, do you mind signing these? And you've been great. You'll sign them right away. I can take them back to my office. I attest them, is what I'm supposed to do, and then we'll return them to Monica. Now, the problem is, if we don't have, we will keep, if everything has been filled out, if the other party has signed, if the county attorney has signed, you've signed, y'all voted on it, signs passed, I attest it. If it's one of the originals, I will keep an original, because by law, I have to keep an original. We are still, we are missing 35 contracts from 2019, originals, that I'm responsible for. We've emailed Monica, I have the emails asking for them, we haven't received them. That's why I hold on to them. If one's done, it's finished, I will hold, and I'm going to hold it, because we won't get it back. At 18 from 2018, and this is going, hey, where are they, where are they, where are they? I'm responsible for that. I understand, Monica, they like to scan everything in, and that's fine, and I appreciate that, but if it's only one original, and it's been fully executed, I'm keeping it. Because by law, I have to. And then we will email you a copy, because you need a copy, unless now you're going to change it to where you get two originals.
People, we need a minimum of three originals.
Which works better.
Right, one is for the judge, one is for the county clerk, and one is to go to the originating department.
Seems like that would solve the problem. But I am worried about- I know, that's what, that's my question. We have emails asking for them, I don't know.
I think one of the things that you need to consider is sometimes when it's a contract and, and the agenda, you know, basically comes to court. Normally, in the past, we would get that squared away with the other party already signing and all has been figured out. Court, the agenda items may go faster, that hasn't been done, so they have to mail it to whoever's supposed to sign as the other party. And so it takes a while before they sign it, and then they mail it back, and then we get all the originals the way they're supposed to. So there is that, that time-
So do you think that's what's happened with these originals? That they're waiting on signatures?
I think that's the problem.
Can we get a copy of, not a copy, can we get a list of all the ones we're missing, so we can have the county attorney to look into it?
That'd be great. The last email that we emailed you, Kenneth did, was on the October 9th, saying, hey, this is the-
And you have a list?
Um, yeah, we keep records of, this is what we're missing from, and we even have it down to, it was passed on during this court date. So we know the court-
So what do you guys, what is y'all's thought on this? Monica, what is your thought on this?
Well, it's just where it's in transition from one office to another, to the vendor to get them signed. Sometimes, unfortunately, they get lost in the process. So unless it comes up that somebody needs a contract, then we won't really know that it's missing, it's not signed, it's not-
So what do y'all think about a policy that if we don't get it back within 30 days, that we, that we send out maybe a second notice on- Yeah, or we do something that requires them to do it, or no contract, right?
Right, so I, and again, I'm not sure how y'all do that, but if you're sending out a contract, wouldn't you keep track? I mean, we're keeping track just from my office over-
I think she's saying that she's mailing them and they're not getting, coming back.
Well, the question really is, whose responsibility is it to mail those originals to the vendor? Should it, should that all go to the clerk? Or should, or should that all go, I mean, I don't know that that's just-
Most counties it is.
Pardon me?
The routing risk, that routing document is the one that says who's going to-
That's what I'm trying to say, to me, I'm not sure that ought to be the county judge's office's responsibility. Maybe we ought to be changing the responsibility that these contracts go to the, and I'm not trying to put something on you, so if you say no, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just throwing this out, I don't-
Well, I think the problem is, is that it's-
Big counties it is.
Most counties go, the clerks take care of all the contracts? Well, I mean, what makes-
Clerk of the court.
I don't think that ought to be your job.
And I think that several years before I was in office, they took that from the county clerk.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know how, why the-
As they say, Tyner, what say you?
Well, you know, a lot of times, the originating department has a, you know, a relationship with the vendor. And so it allows, say, Public Works, when the court approves it, hey, come get the documents and get your vendor to sign them.
Yeah, but in reality, though, that's kind of disjointed, right? I mean, if I've got a contract with a vendor, I got one person in my company that does that. I'm not a big, you know, I'm a small company. But I mean, shouldn't there be one department that handles where the contracts go?
Well, typically, responsible as a record keeper for the contract.
Okay, then, so are you-
Previously, they were being kept track of, is because whenever they would go directly to Monica, she scanned it. And that way she had a record of the contract and whether or not she got it back or not. So we can change this, if you want to change it, that everything goes straight to the county clerk after?
She scans it afterwards, because then she sent, if I send it back to her office, because the county judge, y'all have approved it, the county judge has signed it, I've attested it. If it goes back to Monica, she scans it, she still have it, a record when she sends it out.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I don't think-
Or whoever, so not keeping the, yeah.
But that doesn't really, it's kind of moot if we're going to change it. So in other words, I'm trying to get to, where's the best process? I'm a process guy, right? What's the best process depending, it doesn't matter if any of us are here in 10 years. If the process should be that the county clerk, because that's what the county clerk does in other counties, and then that's what we need to change the process to, because I don't know why the county, I didn't know this was going on. I don't know why the county judge's office would be responsible-
Well, let me, let me tell you why, because, because the county judge signs, is the authority to sign for everything. So the issue is, the county clerk is the record keeper, but the person that's responsible for getting the other party to sign is the, the party that binds. So that's our office. And that's why the triplicate is what you're saying, is that, look, if you want to do that, you can kind of have it both ways. By doing a triplicate original, anytime I sign a contract, I usually sign a double, you know, triples.
But they also have a seal that they've been affixing, that they do not have the authority, Monica does not have the authority to have a seal of the Commissioners' Court, only the county clerk. And so when she was giving me documents with the seal affixed, I was like, how, you do not have the authority to do that.
What seal?
I would say that those were unofficial documents that you were sealing, like a resolution for a presentation. You're not trying to replicate the clerk's seal.
No. Okay.
And the seal that we use, it's usually when we're stamping, like little stickers for certificates and awards and things like that. But the one that she's talking about, we didn't know that we were not supposed to put that seal on there. We were told, put the stamp, and then send it, get your signature, and then send it on.
Okay. So anyway, we've cleared that up.
It would still be more clean that we put it in a department, like the county clerk's office, one to take that off of your responsibility. You sign it, and then you know where to send it, and then the clerk, who is the record keeper, I would think would be the one to do that going forward. I mean, I sign every contract in my company, but I don't send the contract and worry about whether it comes back or forth. I give it to someone and say, okay, you're in charge of making sure this gets done. I mean, you're the CEO, you can't be responsible for making sure contracts come and go. And maybe it ought to be purchasing. I don't know who the right department is, I just don't-
Okay, so for all the contracts that purchasing does for you guys on bids and proposals, we get three originals, and usually they're signed in advance, sometimes they're not. When they're not, they come back to my office, and I go make sure that we get the signatures from the entity, and then bring it back to the judge's office.
For signature.
And then they take it back to the county clerk's office, is my understanding.
That's, exactly.
I don't, I don't know what happens to it after I bring it back.
That's my-
That's the practice has always been-
If it's a final, like, if it's-
We try to get them in advance, because that's the best practice.
I think, I think what's going to happen here is that, the most important thing is that the clerk gets an original copy, that, that that's not an issue here, because she's the record keeper. But I think what's not practical, and maybe we need to have a conversation about this, it's not practical for her to run around all the departments all over Noises County and get the, get the opposite signature.
No, the end user who's creating this mess, or the-
Yes, that's fine.
Is the one who should own getting all the signatures.
That's right, and I think that's where it's a little tricky. I don't think she wants that.
We can't put all that burden on-
Well, it's not a burden, it's just she can't do it, because it's not her job to-
All my contacts either to know-
Right, her job security.
Your department, you should be responsible for that. I think what Commissioner Chesney is saying is that when you send it back to, it's done, and you're sending it back to the county judges, when she's already executed it, she, and it should go to my office. You know what I mean? So it's going so many different places.
But I think the request is make a triplicate, and the reason the triplicate is just so the judge has an extra copy, not whether the original number one goes to her. She can have, she needs to have her number one. The reason for the number three is so that we can have access, if you will, not a formal document, to have it. that we can have access, if you will, not a formal document, to have it.
You should have a record. Purchasing has been providing three copies.
For a long time, right.
But I think all the other departments...
Okay, so what we're trying to do is just keep it consistent.
Yeah, where the other, yeah, that's a good question. If other departments are executing their own, they can't be, though, because judge would have to execute, she'd still have to sign it. So any contract that's gonna come to her, then the judge would sign it, keep her triplicate, reroute it to, to the county clerk's office, whoever Karen designates, and then that's the record keeper, and...
Right, and then that's fine.
But then you would have to follow up, right? Your office would have some follow up, because you keep the list already, you'd know, we've got it, or we don't have it, and then you would be able to alert the judge or the court, hey, we don't have a contract, right? Or something like that?
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Thirty-five that are missing.
Right, okay.
This year so far, that we can't, we don't...
And how old are those?
This is just this year.
Nineteen.
No, I know, but like, are they thirty days old? Is there anything that's like, we executed in January, we haven't gotten it back?
We have a spreadsheet.
Yeah, let's look, let's look at it.
I know one example, the way Teresa does all the inter-locals, is she has her stack of inter locals.
Oh, that's actually a very good example.
And she calls every one of them and says, I need you in my office before October thirtieth, I need your signature on this contract, or it's not gonna go through.
How about outside agency contracts? Those are classic, they take forever.
She does not put them on the agenda without the other person's signature on the contract first.
Right.
So whoever it is, purchasing, Public Works, whoever, can't put it on the agenda without the other person's signature.
Let's get clarity. What you're asking the court today is to go, to have a consistent triplicate for all departments.
Right.
Is there anything else you're asking for? I mean, we've got a lot of good background as to why...
The only other thing I'm asking for is the deadline two days prior to court.
So I'd like to take a motion on the deadline, because that doesn't affect anybody, it just helps efficiency. Is there any reason to, to not consider the deadline, Cara?
Oh, no, it's...
The deadlines?
It has to do with...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not there.
Okay.
What are we moving?
A deadline to, to bring the paperwork, the paperwork to Margaret's office.
Two days prior to court, to bring a signed contract two days prior to court, even before we've awarded it?
Well, just the paperwork, is to avoid the Wednesday morning chaos.
It's something that's gonna get presented to commissioner's court anyways, just like it always has.
Right, so we, okay, so, so it...
So if it doesn't get approved, she's not gonna sign it.
But maybe the city corpus Christy has assigned it, approved it, and they've signed it.
Okay.
There can always be an exception to the rule, always, you know, due to variance, but the, the general policy is that you, just like you have an agenda deadline, the deadline for paperwork is two days before. And let's have a motion on that. I think that's a reasonable request. Motion and a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, now, on the triplicate, I think that's for the benefit of, of, of our office, to make sure that we can keep up with all of the, the contracts, and I don't necessarily need an executed copy, I just need the copy, right? I mean, it's nice to have the executed piece of it, but...
Well, if the department will make you a copy...
Right.
Then, just as long as we get three of everything.
And just so you know, it's online as well. So we've worked with IT, and the executed document is online, we're uploading it, so when you go to the minutes, you're, you can get your copy, and everyone can see them. What I don't, what I would, since I wasn't brought into this conversation, although I am the county clerk and the record keeper for the county commissioner's court, before this agenda item, I would ask, here, it says that everything is, I am to return all copies to your office.
That is not a change.
And then you're gonna, and then after, I've attested, after the finalized, completely, completely executed copy, I return it to you, and then you return it to me?
You don't have to.
No, that's not, that's not even a change.
I think that's, I think it's just saying, instead of two copies, you're gonna get three.
This has been on the routing sheet forever.
This should change, though, because I'm not...
Well, that's what we're talking about.
It needs to be changed.
I'm not, I'm not doing that.
But it, it would, if, everything had a contract, and Monica were to get the contracts and resolutions, and then have everybody sign them, the whole thing would be done, and all you would have to do is attest it. If, if, whenever court is over, and, and you give the contracts and resolution, Monica gives you the contracts, you give Monica the contracts and resolutions, she'll call all the parties that need to sign the contracts...
Not my concern, my concern is the court. My concern is the court signing resolutions, and the county judge signing the contracts, which she does, and she does it the same day.
Right, that's what we're talking about, but if there's someone else that needs to sign them, once they go to you, then everything will be finished, you just attest it.
Judge, it sounds like they should have communication before this was brought on the agenda. I'm not being ugly, there should have been a communication and figure this out before.
Well, I didn't really feel like there needed to be communication, because that wasn't one of our changes. This is something that's been on the routing sheet.
I know that the county judge, actually, you said, why don't y'all get together, let's have a meeting, and I, we never got a call, so y'all...
Okay, so I want to make sure that we're not, I want to make sure that we're not, the request does not change our procedure. Is that correct? Your request is to have triplicates as a standard, instead of a double.
It's just where they go after court, is where the problem is. Cara, if, if y'all want everything to go to Cara after court, and have her take care of everything, then that's one option. If you want everything to go to Monica, for her to have everybody sign, and then Cara attest it, that's the other option. So there's...
Let me make a motion that we do approve triplet, okay? That's my only motion I'm gonna make. How it's done afterwards, you need to, you need to sit down together and see how it's gonna be done. But I'll make a motion that we have, we process three originals.
We're already doing that.
Well, I mean, but you brought it before the court approved it.
But it's just been added to the, to the routing sheet.
But that's, but we need that to be approved, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let's, let's hold on that. Let's, that motion is a motion to add to the routing sheet, the triplicates, that were already in process, that doesn't change anything, but it just standardizes the triplicates on the routing sheet. I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, on this other matter, let me sit down with the county clerk and figure out, but let's make sure we're speaking the same language. All we're talking about is there are some contracts that need a second signature. In other words, they're not coming to me as a final product. If it comes to me, and I sign it, and it's done, it's gonna go straight to you, we have no worries. There's a narrow focus here, there are some contracts that need to get vendor's signatures. This is a small population we're talking about. I don't think it's Cara's, I don't think she has the manpower to go out there and get these signatures, okay? So the issue is, and this is what we're gonna talk about, is how do we handle better when we need a second signature, as in the party that makes it a complete contract, right? That's the population that we're dealing with. Because those are the ones that are missing. But they're not really missing, they are pending, they are pending a signature return.
That's correct.
And I'll be honest with you, it's not a contract until they sign it, even if we've approved it.
That might be proof already, but you can't find them.
Well, they can't, it's not that they can't find them, it's they have not been returned.
They're in my office.
They've not been returned, because we have not received, but they haven't returned to ours either. In other words, they're receiving. But what I think, all this is revealed, that's very interesting, is that I think every thirty days, we need to know who has not returned our court's documents, and, and the department head needs to be responsible, or the requesting person is responsible for returning it within thirty, within thirty days.
Well, or, Judge, maybe it's, maybe that function, and that's where you and Cara can sit down, but maybe that function is, then it goes back to Tyner's office, and then Tyner's office, his court administration has to call and say, get me your stinking contract, or we're gonna void you.
Right, because what the clerk cares about is the record.
Right.
She's not in the business of chasing people down.
He's not the enforcer.
That's right. So...
So y'all can work that out.
We will work that out. I think, I think that's the crux of it. But Margaret needed some routing changes.
But there's nothing substantive you're asking for here today, other than the deadline and the triplicate added to the agenda. And then you want clarification and direction on how we're gonna handle when the document needs another signature.
You know, one thing we can put on there is, whenever they bring me all their paperwork, I'll check the signatures. If the other party's signature isn't on it, I hand it back to them. Before we can present this to court, you need to have the other signature on it.
Tyner?
Well, that's really, that's not very practical, because we have a lot of people from out of town that we need signatures for.
Judge, I would just suggest we move this forward, and you can talk and get this...
Look, we've done what we could do today. This is why Tyner gets the big bucks. Guess whose problem this now is? This is Tyner.
It just became my problem.
It just became your problem. I need you to call a meeting. Well, what I need you to do is just, the three of us can figure this out, okay? But I think the most important thing is that it's very clear to me that we all have the same goal in mind, that there's a record that's kept archivally for the court, and that I, as a county judge in the office, this is how it was done before, keeps a copy. It's pretty simple, okay? So we'll make this happen. We get a copy for our records. By the way, it's not a perfect backstop, but it is a good backstop. You know, it's a good way to have a, you never know whether you might need, you should all, it's just nice to have a, a copy, but it's not the official copy, and we've clarified the seal.
Yeah, the original, the rest were an original, they want three originals. You get a copy, anyone can get a copy.
I know, forgive me. You're right, we're using it very loosely. But when we sign originals that are in duplicate or triplicate, that's really the purpose, that, that both sides get a copy. And, but in our case, you're the official side, and I get the triplicate to keep it for mine. And I think that's a good, a good, a good point. Okay. All right, thank you, ladies. Is there anything else? If there is, will you work with Tyner on, on, if there is something else that needs to be...
So really, we only need one original and two copies. Is, is that...
No, they've approved the three originals.
Okay.
And the two-day, is that...
A two-day deadline. And there's always exceptions, the rule, if something crazy happens, please, please see Tyner as the court manager.
Okay.
Okay. The last one is, and thank you for your patience, sir, you signed up for public comment, let me at least present the agenda item, and then I'll ask you to come forward. That's number nine, discuss and consider the residency status of Thaddeus Mittman. Is that you're correct, how to say it? For the purposes of serving on the Board of Emergency Service District Number Three. And if, if you would approach, I know you, you had signed up, and I welcome you to court once again. We follow these rules, and sometimes they don't seem practical, but they are important, so thank you for your patience.
They are, and I thank you very much. I'm really just here sort of as a supplement to findings that have been ongoing.
Okay.
So I believe that, I was asked on September sixth to research the residency of one of our commissioners. I had just coincidentally called into the, the court office to announce to them that we had a vacancy on our board. We had just accepted the resignation of our president. That night, I was named the president, the new president, and so I was just calling to announce that vacancy. Well, it just so happened that they, the, the office had received an anonymous call about one of our fellow commissioners and his residency, so I was asked to look into it. And the bottom line is that from my findings, that it, everything that I have researched shows that Mr. Thaddeus Mittman is not a resident of our district.
Okay, he's neither a registered voter of Neises County, nor does he own property in Neises County?
Not from my findings.
Okay. Is there any other, he doesn't have an address in Neises County, he doesn't have to own property to be a resident. Does he, does he reside in Neises County?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and Tyner, what do you have to add?
And I think the rule is, if you look at the county attorney opinion, it's registered to vote or own property. I, I called him yesterday, he admitted to me that he is attempting to purchase property, and he has not yet.
Okay.
So, I told him, look, if you ever complete that deal and own property in Neises County, you know, then we'll talk about it.
He would be eligible.
So Laura, is this an automatic disqualification also? So we need to post it and, and put it back on? Right, okay.
Okay.
So I would say that we post that and put it back on for November sixth to open the process, or, it is perfect, good job.
So we're gonna open the process to get new applicants?
Right.
I guess when they apply, we don't check out anything they put down, like registered to vote, do we?
Not registered to vote, but his address actually have Ricardo on it?
Yeah.
And so I questioned him about it, is this a fraudulent, fraudulent receipt?
Okay. Not good. By the way, I, I recognized you earlier, but for the record and the clerk, would you state your name again?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Gary Ulenfeld, two oh seven East Joyce Bishop.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you have for us today? Thank you, and thank you for your...
Thank you for your efforts on this.
Are you sure you live there?
Thank you.
I've got lots of documentation.
Thank you.
Somebody else here recommend, man.
Yeah, make sure that they know that the process will be open again.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, we're gonna move on to Public Works, and, and Wond, we have an approval of a rate increase for residential solid waste collection in the rural and incorporated areas.
Yes, Judge, we're recommending the approval of the rate increase for residential solid waste collection in the rural and the unincorporated areas of Neises County. And this is based on the, the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, and I've been told that it fluctuates on a yearly basis, sometimes it goes down, and sometimes it goes up. So based on the new rate increase, it's gonna increase seventeen cents monthly for residential services, which is currently twenty-five forty-eight. And in the unincorporated areas of San Pedro and Bluebonnet, it'll increase by fifteen cents increase on a monthly rate, which is about, which is twenty-one seventy-four per month. So we'll have that increase into...
Well, and that wouldn't be done when they sign the contracts?
It, it's, it's in the, it's in the contract, Commissioner? Yes, ma'am. It's under the section...
So the residents know this is gonna happen?
Not yet. I mean, this is, is, that's the reason why we're coming to court.
Because I gotta tell you, I've been getting so many calls, they're doing a shoddy job. I've been getting so many calls, I really have, out there. They're frustrated with them, picking brush and garbage up. So, I mean...
Are they not being timely? What is the...
They're leaving it over time, and then they're not picking it all up. And I know part of it has to do with how big it is, but, I mean, I've, I've had a lot of calls on that.
So is this something we have to do based on the contract, is what I read?
That's correct.
I mean, it's basically, we don't have a choice on this one. This is just a ratification of what's already basically in the contract.
So, let's get a motion on what we have to do, but then let's also have some discussion. I'll take a motion on the, on the CPI index, which is really, you know, the only thing is allowed to do, you wanna weigh in? I mean, this is part, you wanna just say that it's part of the contract?
Yes, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Vaughn's calls are people that are basically, people that are subscribing with this, with this company or not. So...
They have, they're, yeah.
If they, if they are, then I think that they need to be referred to them to...
Oh, I refer them, but they always want the commissioner's court to take care of it, since it's through us, which...
So I guess when, you might want to bring to us some information about when their renewal is, so that we can address these concerns. But within their contract that's valid and current, they have the right to have a CPI increase, and that's what we're ratifying.
Yes.
So, okay, I've got, I'll need a motion to ratify this.
Move.
Okay. And I'll second, I know no one wants to, but the problem is, is that it's, it's legally binding. So, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign. And again, looks like we're, we have some displeasure, so maybe we can do some, reach out and public, you know, communication with them, and let them know that we're receiving a lot of negative comments, and that we kind of expect them to do their job in a better way, because when they come up for renewal, that will be weighed heavily, their performance. And I think it's our duty to inform them when they're not performing under the contract. So if, if you'll work with Commissioner Vaughn's office, she can probably provide more specifics, and then maybe we should, under the contract, note that they're not performing well. What do you think?
And just FYI, Judge, I have had meetings with them, with, with the residents too before, so...
Well, all of that, I think is, maybe the contract, you know, don't you think that that's a good idea, Lauta?
And Judge, I think we need to have...
Yes, sir.
Maybe, we can encourage Mr. Davis to come, maybe just during public comment next
maybe just during public comment next meeting, just to give us an update, address it. I don't know if we have to necessarily have a full-blown agenda item on here. You know, we deal with him a lot, cause you know, my precinct has a lot like Commissioner Vaughn's, with a lot of the residential, rural residential communities that are out there that utilize absolute waste. And when we've had needs, we've called them, and he's been able to help out, not to defend him, but the explanations I've heard is, well, sometimes people put it out too late, or they use cans that are not authorized, or they're using, they're not even a customer, and they're just putting out trash. So there's a lot of issues, so maybe if he can either present something in written form or come before us, test to explain. Like I said, I'm not trying to defend him.
I think it's a good recommendation.
I think there's always room for improvement, but he's always also, always been open to, when we call him, he'll go back and try to double up, even though they've probably already gone through the neighborhood once before. But I agree, I mean, we get a lot of complaints.
He has helped me too, but we do, but I wish, they don't know where to call. And maybe on our website, we oughta put, I mean, I would just go to information, but on our website, put something, if you're having problems, cause they call us, and there's nothing we can do, you know, except call.
In the past, in the past, they have worked with Public Works in distributing information to the, to the public. So, I mean, maybe that just needs to be done again.
Yeah, and we'll contact capacity.
Okay, Juan, we now have, we need to.
Judge, we're gonna recommend tabling on the elevators, the line item for number two.
Okay. You got me on this one. Why?
There's, there's some minor items that we need to.
Well, I'm gonna suggest that I make a motion that we at least discuss it, and I'm okay if it's minor items with the contract to authorize the county attorney to sign it, but I'm not gonna let the people in this building know that I'm tabling work orders for elevators one more time. I'm just not gonna do it. I mean, I'd like, I'll make the motion to, to, to provide for the repair of the tower elevator doors.
Subject to?
Subject to Loura Jimenez and/or her designee working out these minor items.
We have provided, obviously, our revisions, and I think we just have not received them.
Okay, well, I, I mean, thank you for, I'm glad to know it, and we're gonna call them this afternoon.
So it's not on our end, Judge, which I think is important.
Right, it's on our end, but we gotta.
I agree with you.
Okay, we gotta push it. So, thank you. Is that a motion? I've got a motion, I need a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, it's not, it's a contract issue, not a dollar change, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. On auditors, Dale, you've got four items. One is a budget change order. And then, of course, there are the financial reports, followed by the investment report.
I'll try to be as quick as I can, cause I know the time is, it's getting a little late. The first one is budget change order number two for, or current fiscal year, excuse me. There's only a few items on this list. The one is for the McKenzie Jail Annex. They needed to rent a portable generator as they were working on getting the dormitory set up. So we had to move some money around, and the money was available in the building superintendent, so we were able to do that.
Excuse me, Juan, don't leave, I want you to, I'm gonna stop Dale right there. That's required, correct, for jail standards? Okay, I just want him to know why we're making this request of the portable generator. That that's required, correct? Okay, sorry Dale.
Also, on for Road and Bridge there, it wasn't an additional expense. They're upgrading the security equipment at their Public Works central garage, so they were needing some items. And because of the type of the equipment they're buying, it just changes the category they're in. So the funds are there for the use of particular items to be moved, and we present this for your approval.
So that, that, the security equipment is within the budget, but it just, explain that one again?
Normally, the equipment would have been as a repair of your buildings and grounds, but it's the type of the equipment it is, and the cost of equipment is now becomes considered an office equipment.
I understand now.
So it's moved to different categories.
Just category change. Do I have a motion to approve both such change orders? And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have a monthly financial report, Dale?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, this is the monthly financial report for August 31st, 2019. I always go to the balance sheets for the funds, which is found on page four. The main one, we always talk about, the general fund, showing forty-three million dollars worth of assets, twelve point eight million dollars worth of liabilities, giving us a current fund balance of thirty point three million. Remember, we still have one month to go on this, and that's where we'll probably get down to our normal balance that we reported as our budget, because we spend about ten to fifteen million dollars a month on expenses, and most of our revenues are already coming in through our taxes level. As you'll see on page six, where we're showing the revenue collection for the general fund of ninety-one million, expenses of seventy-four. One item we want, I'd like to discuss is our self-insurance fund, and that's on page 10. The one we always talk about is our group health, is where we've always had an eye on. We're at two point nine million dollars worth of cash, one point five million worth of liabilities. And on the good side, we're one point three million worth of fund balance, and that's very promising. And we can, we continue to see this grow. And you'll see that on page 12, where you look at the revenue to expense for this particular fund, and how the fund balances work. And it's very promising to see those balances grow.
Dale, are we kind of, when will we actually see the done-done, if you will, on the claims? Like, you know, you know how sometimes we have trailing claims on that balance? We should be getting close, don't you think? Like, if we see.
We've already reported, the last report for September should be getting done soon, so you should already have the balances, those are finalized there. I've gotta do an adjustment with Tomas to say what runoff claims are, balance balances are.
That's what I really mean, the runoff claims.
We gotta.
So do you think maybe by somewhere mid-November, you could report to us that those are final numbers? Okay, I'm gonna look for you to make that note. I wanna see those. I think, I think you're right. I don't wanna celebrate too soon, but it sure looks good right now.
Most definitely. I expect about another hundred thousand more for runoff claims, how we normally do it, cause we're at seven hundred, and runoff claims are around nine hundred thousand. So we've already have some set, so it shouldn't be too much of a balance, we'll still be on a positive side.
Okay, good.
Very good. The budget items that we wanna go through, if, on page 23, of course, Judge, yours a little bit low, that's because Judge Neal never gave you any items for your IT department, so that's kinda where yours always be a little bit behind.
Right, I'll take that criticism all day long. We're gonna modernize this courthouse, so.
Definitely. On page 31, again, you'll see the Broadway Warehouse, and then we're keeping an eye on the utilities. That's where the issue is, and sometimes our utility rates get a little bit higher or lower, but it's, now we're going to where it's getting a little cooler, so we're not having to run as much electricity. So that'll probably even out.
You think it will?
I believe so, cause we're now getting November, so that it's.
Yeah, it really comes on down, doesn't it?
On page 33, you'll see the Bishop Building as well, that's where the issue is on telephone utilities. And that's where most of them are gonna be on our buildings that are reaching those levels. But because of how we do our budgets, these smaller buildings, we kinda get as close to where we need to be as possible, so it's not surprising where they're at. The next department that was in question is on page 38. And that's the legal aid, and that's because we have to pay our rent at a certain period of time, so that's always gonna be an issue until we get to the end of the year and start the new year, and that twenty-five thousand dollars is a one-time hit. On the very next page, on page 39, is our magistrate court on the very top. And a lot of this is coming from different costs for our salaries and benefits. Most of our salaries for our judges, the two magistrate judges, we kind of increased their hours a little bit to try to reduce our jail population, and this was budgeted at the older rate. So I think the new budget was at the current rate where we're at, cause when we first put this in, we were allowing them twenty hours, twenty hours per week, per each. And they were now, when we increased it to twenty-five hours per week, per judge.
And I wanna, I wanna make the court aware of something. I have made a decision to, on January 15th, I have to declare whether or not I want to exempt myself from judicial duties. I'm declaring that I will not be doing that. I will accept judicial duties, and in effort to help these numbers, I'm gonna get trained, and I'll magistrate if I need to. And it won't cost you a dime, and we're gonna help these numbers. And the JPs can do it too, but I know they're pretty overworked, Commish, but, well, I'm happy to bring them on, too. Yeah. Well, I just think that, you know, when money's tight and jail population's high, I mean, I can do it. It's something that I.
And Judge, when you, and when you're doing it, would you call me? I'd like to come watch, please, thank you.
Oh, you wanna see it?
I would like to watch, sure.
Okay. Okay.
On page 41, we have our, two of our district courts on, the 94th District Court and the 105th District Court. The, both of them have had large capital trial expenses, and capital trial expenses are very expensive. As you'll see on page 42, as well as the 117th District Court, is the same reason. And that's why you'll see the special personnel is minus six percent, because when you have these big capital trials, it gets that way. Not to go is on page 43, you'll see that the 214th as well is a little bit over. And it's just this one year, we've had a lot of capital trial coming into the DA's office and into the processing, and we had five at one time, and they are not cheap when we process those balances.
Dale, am I wrong? Is there, there is some reimbursement from the state on some of these for their indigent defense?
Well, we get a, we get a indigent defense grant, we have the formal grant we have for quarter point attorneys. Now, there is a special grant we can have for special circumstances type offenses. So if we have a special trial, like when we had the Sanders trial here a long time ago, because the house was split up, we're able to recover some of that cost.
Okay.
Now, some of these other ones that we, we're looking at, the one we just had, that we had three different trials for one particular person, and it was mistrial, 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 we're gonna see if we can work that as a.
That might be good.
Something that's out of normal.
You know what I just remembered we can do? We'll track this, and this comes off our revenue cap calculation. This is very important. Okay.
The next, is on page 50, is JP number four, is a little bit over budget. They've had several changes in some personnel there, and the personnel that came in might have accepted some health insurance that the other one may not have had, so that's not surprising sometimes when you have a change in personnel, especially small departments like this. On page 53, we see that the jail, as getting close to the year-end, is very high, and the biggest one is our salaries overtime, as well as other costs that we have. It's not surprising where that would be if our jail population has been where it has been in, going on.
Yeah, obviously, it's worth noting that we have been, for sixty days, around, a mean average of around eighty-six, eighty-seven percent. This is a tremendous relief, and I'd like to make sure that we're calculating, now that we're in a new fiscal year, with all the changes we've made, we need to see if the changes are creating, in other words, I need to make sure that their population on overtime is being reduced proportionally, and only you can tell us that, Dale, so.
We'll also have to work with HR to make sure, to show you what the vacancy rate is.
That's correct. Correct, but let's start tracking that, cause we have enough data now. Yeah.
Now, on page 56, we have Constable Precinct Five has a little bit of an issue there. Now, when we did our last collective borrowing agreement, item, this now might become an issue, because most times our constables can use their overtime through our Stone Garden Grant. However, when we did the negotiation with our collective borrowing agreement, we made vacation time as part of productive time, because that's how it worked through other counties and other cities. So now their vacation is considered productive time, so that's actually shown as if they worked, even though they're on vacation. So they get to the point where then they run the time issue, they can now cause it to be overtime. And this overtime is not able to be gone through Stone Garden, cause they didn't actually work that item, they were actually on vacation. It is a little confusing, but we had to work through some processes when, when we were in our collective borrowing agreement. This was a big issue of how we wanted to do this, and that's what some of the items are driving.
I thought the Stone Garden was only if you worked in interdiction, is the only way you can charge the stone?
There are some, but most of the time, the constables can use their overtime as through the Stone Garden Grant, because they do what the Stone Garden is. But because of this new agreement with our, within our contract of our collective borrowing agreement, and vacation time is now productive time, it now may cause overtime that we cannot apply to our grant.
You're paying for the Stone Garden?
We can't, because it's not, because of time, the overtime is because of they took vacation.
I thought you said that we can pay for the Stone Garden, I didn't think.
We can't, we can't pay it, because it was not generated for that function. That's all of our balances in the general fund that show as a negative position. But overall, on page 61, you see in, with only one month to go, we're at eighteen percent left of our general fund. And if, one month is eight percent, so we're doing very, very well.
Yes, we are. Really, I'm very happy about those numbers. But I'll be happier when we really get into November, cause then I'll see all the trailing costs, and then it's a better, it's a better number, it's a more real number.
Now, the one, the one thing we wanna try to bring back is, is starting on page 75, which is where our capital projects are. This is all of our lists of where our capital projects are. Now, y'all authorized us to get some new software, so we're gonna start doing some better reporting of our capital projects through that new program, when it gets all designed and set up correctly, and showing you where all the locations are, where all the funds are.
Have you received it, Dale?
We're, we've already, we're talking with the company, because they've gotta do a lot of stuff on setting up, how this is all structured.
Just wondering.
The main page I want you to look at is on page 80. That shows you all of our COs that are pending. This does not have the new CO yet that we just issued, but this, the old COs, showing how much is left of each, and we need to try, I know, I know most of y'all are trying to work on the 2004, but we have 2007, 2015, that are really, need to start working on getting those done as well, as well as the 2016. There's a lot of stuff that we have in 16 that has come in, and we've budgeted some stuff that has not been touched in years. So we need to make sure we start processing that as well, and try to use some of this funds first, before we touch the forty million dollars in the new appropriations. But that's something I know I'll work with Tyner and his staff, and you, of course, Judge and the commissioners, on how we process and use the funds.
Yes, and I'd like to encourage y'all to, let's, you know, let's have like, a day where I get to meet with maybe, you know, the commissioners, where we can really, we have, the capital improvement plan identifies projects for you. So if you need to marry a project with funds, we can do that for you. We just need you to come and talk to us.
Some of the items that were reported in the capital improvement plan may already be funded through the old money. So it could be already some there that we can use that, instead of trying to use the forty million first, and still sit on sixteen or eighteen million.
That's correct.
On page 84, it shows you our P cards for the month of August. We spent three hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred seven dollars. Again, the biggest one is repairs and maintenance of buildings. And then not too far down there is equipment. Michael and I will be bringing a item, I believe, on the next agenda for possibly leasing our fleet of our cars, which will reduce that significantly. We already have the funds this year, cause we can move the money that we have as a capital outlay item to a lease payment item, and instead of being able to only buy fifteen cars, we may be able to lease eighty. And then, because of the size and the type of new vehicles here, of course, since they're gonna be new, our costs will definitely go down. The last item is the last page, showing you how much we spent for our capital, our P cards for the whole year, and that's three point seven million dollars. That is the monthly financial report for August 31st, 2019. Submit this for your approval.
I'll take a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor? I'm so sorry. I'll just, yeah, discussion?
So on page 27, I'd like to point out, that's our elections, and I really watch our budget closely. And it says that we're over budget by twenty-four percent for travel, and that is not accurate.
Okay, will you address that with Kara after court? And we can make any modifications if there was an error?
I guess.
Travel's not over budget, it's your capital.
It's the next line, Kara. Capital outlay, the twelve hundred and thirty dollar.
No, the travel.
No, not travel, travel's two fifty, two fifty, two fifty, and there's a hundred percent.
Travel is five thousand, we don't spend two hundred and fifty dollars.
Capital outlay's five thousand.
Capital outlay's seventeen thousand five hundred.
All right, okay, yeah, okay. Well, obviously, but our budget shows five thousand, and we spent sixty-two hundred, so.
The weekly budget update we get from you, from your office, actually shows the week prior.
You got, you got a month, you got a two-month answer. We already made a budget change order that addresses this.
There was no budget change order for that. All I'm saying is that the numbers don't add up to what you send us weekly. And I would just encourage every elected official department head to really compare your weekly, what you get, keep track of it, because I can go down the line here and say this doesn't match.
Is your budget five thousand dollars?
It is, and what we had spent even to the end of the year was three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. And that is on the report I received from your office on September 24th. It's the same report that I received on September 3rd. You're saying this is to the end of August. So why is it in September, the reports say that we only spent three hundred, three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight, yet your August report says we spent six thousand two hundred and thirty?
Did your office submit a request to reallocate some costs?
No, not for this.
Can we approve this subject to?
Yeah, let me subject, let me approve it, subject to, I'm gonna redo the motion, subject to your clarification with regards to your travel, and you'll work with Dale, or are they? And we'll bring it back on November 6th, you know? I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay? And now we've got the investment report and policy. And, um, now we've got the investment, um, report and policy.
We had a, a, a investment committee meeting, uh, la- last week, and, uh, we went through the process of, of, of going through our, our, our policy, and we found some items that needed to be addressed because the, uh, title for, uh, Tyner's position has been changed, so we needed to maintain and, and, and make the requirements here. So we made this to show that this is now the official title for his position is Commissioner of Court Administration Manager, where it was Director at first. So that has now been, been fixed here throughout the report. Uh, we've always been, uh, coming with the problem of, uh, you'll see in our, our quarterly investment report is our balance on page nine. If you look on page nine on the, toward the top where it says diversity operations account portfolio by type, uh, before this, we had our local investment pool, which is where we, uh, invest a lot of our, our funds, that was at eighty-five percent. That balances because of how our current rates are. Our current rates for our, our Texas class, which is our, our current investment pool, is at two point five percent, which our banks at two point four. When we try to go out and find negotiable securities, whether they be certificates of deposit, or they be invest, investments through the federal government or through a municipal bond, we can't find interest higher than that. So it doesn't make sense for us to go to a two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year investment if we can make the same thing in our local investment pool that we can have the next day if we want. So we needed to increase that so we can make sure we kept within our limits. So we believe ninety percent is, is a good threshold for, for that particular process. So we might, made that minor change for that. But my staff and, and, and Lorenzo and Karen, her staff go through this stuff as, as thorough as we can, and we make sure we, we call our investment brokers as often as we can to try to find the best deals we can. But right now, it's, it's hard to beat two point four percent on, on interest for, that our, that our, our Texas class is making on the next-day class.
Hey Dale, what, how come that has thirteen months, everybody else is sixty months?
That's the type of, that's type of a, a purchasing. If, if we, we don't do repurchase agreements, repurchase agreements are very risky kind of stuff, but we, we, because the state allows this to be put it, we have to include it in our, our policy. Uh, but a repurchase agreement cannot be longer than thirteen, thirteen months. But we do not invest in any of those because of how, how, how Tennessee, sometimes, sometimes they can be very risky, almost like a derivative, and you don't want to touch derivatives at all. But we don't have that on here, which is very good, but that's one of the main reasons for that. Uh, some of the rest of the changes are, we, 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 we had the funds on page seventeen and eighteen where we talked about our operating funds and our other funds. We didn't really ever list what our other funds were, so we made sure we identified those other funds that, that are, are there. Uh, those are the changes we have for our investment policy. We went through our investment committee. Our investment committee has reviewed this and made the approval that these are, are changes that need to be made, and therefore we submit the investment policy for the Commissioners' Court for your approval.
I've got a motion and I need a second, and I've got a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign.
The final report would be our, our quarterly investment report. On page one is where, uh, sometimes when you, when you read this, it might look shocking that on a summary of our cash where our balances have decreased sixteen million dollars down from the prior month, our prior quarter. But that's not really too distracting because of where we are in the year. We're at June. As I said, we spend about ten million dollars or twelve million dollars a month in, in expenses. And because all of our tax collections are at the very beginning of the year, and they, they start, starts, uh, once we get to, uh, this January and February, that's where they start slowing down, and we've already collected ninety-five to ninety-seven percent, you'll start having more expenses than revenues, so your balances will start decreasing by more. So it might look bad that we see a sixteen million dollar decrease from the previous quarter, but that's not really that concerning because of how we, we run our, our balances.
So because, because that's, it's a very important to be clear, the reason you see that is because of our ad valorem collection, and once we get our ad valorem collection, it will auto-correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
On page three, we show our diversified, you know, our cash and cash equivalent balances. As you'll see, a hundred and twelve million dollars in total investments with fourteen million in cash, eighty-four million dollars in our, our Texas class, as we said, that was our Texas, our, our pole funds. And we have brokered CDs, municipal bonds, and US agency funds, and you'll see a, a breakdown of how those are. Page four just shows you the, the changes of how these operating funds and other funds, uh, where the cash was and where they changed from a year ago. And the general fund is up from, from a year ago as well as most of them, except a few small other funds. Our law library is down, but we're working on that with the IDA on trying to bring in some higher rates as well. Uh, coastal parks, just because of how it functions within one year, another year, it's not concerning on, on, on this matter. And our, our grant funds for our, our juvenile grant funds, they're down because of the amount of money that the IMES has brought in. Page six shows you our portfolio diversity, showing again that we're cash and cash equivalents is eighty-six percent. That's why we wanted to go to ninety percent to, because our threshold was eighty-five, so we don't feel, trying to get, later on, we'll show you the rates, how we work this up. So our brokered CDs are at three point six one percent, our municipal bonds two point one, and our US agency was our federal investments is a two-point, or seven point four. Our liquidity, which is, is our maximum liquidity is three point six, three hundred and sixty-four days. Most of our liquidity for our investments are very low because of, of being in Texas pool, our, our, our pole funds, sorry, and that'd be thirty-six days for that. Now, the good thing we want to look at is on page seven. You'll see where we have our beginning balances of our funds. We had one of our, 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 our agency funds, um, matured, that's why you see a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar adjust, adjustment as a subtraction, and our ending balance, which matches our beginning foul. The one to the very bottom is where it's very important that we look at, is that's where we look at our interest from one year to next year. If we look at the quarter ending, we brought in seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven and thirteen dollars. Same time last year was only five hundred and thirteen thousand, so we brought in two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more in interest in that quarter. Now, the good thing is you look at the next cycle, which is year-to-date. From last year to this year, we've brought in one million, fifty-two thousand dollars more in interest, which is very, very promising. The next few charts just show you our, our investments, our, our ladders. We're gonna go to our charts starting on page fourteen. On page fourteen just shows you our portfolio holding by its particular fund, with our operating fund being twenty-three point three-five percent, our debt service five point one seven, our capital projects, because we have issued a little bit of, of COs for this, is that the highest one is forty-nine percent, and then our other funds at twenty-one percent. As you see, we, we, we want to make sure we, we try to keep our brokers dealers equally split out, and you'll see that we're very close of, of having an equal share of who we deal with on a balance. But lately, our First Tennessee, which used to be, uh, South, First Southwest, uh, before they changed to Furnace Tennessee, has, has been giving us the best investment quality rates, the best rates, so we've, they're a little bit higher than that, but we still try to make sure we have our, our, our balances forward. On page sixteen and page seventeen, where we show our distribution by our federal side, it's always been the case that we've always had more investment in Freddie Mac loans or your federal, federal home loan banks, just because they just get the better rates than the, your farm, or farm or your Fannie Mae. The one thing you need to look on is page seventeen, and this is where we compare our rate to one-year treasury. And for the longest period of time going through seventeen, eighteen, we've been a little bit below, but as you look at the one we now just went through, we are now higher than a one-year treasury, which is very good. We're, we're projecting a two point six return where one-year treasury is two point two five, two point two. On page eighteen is a two-year treasury. We'll never be there because of how we do some of our balances for cash equivalents with our, our pole funds, but, but we're, we're maintaining, we're, we're on the same curve as, as their two-year treasury, so it's very promising. Now, this is where I, I mentioned to you on page nineteen, showing you the, the rates, why we're, we're maintaining some of our balances. If you look at the third column that says Texas class, you look at the very bottom, June, two thousand and nineteen, we were receiving two point five percent of interest. For a depository, which is Frost Bank, we're receiving two point oh one percent. So those two numbers tell you right now that if we, if, if we can keep these numbers here, and we're now at the bank with one day maturity, we, we can beat anything on the market. Now, we know that there, there's, there, as we get closer to the year-end, and especially when we're getting close to a presidential election, sometimes these markets do a, a, a nose tie sometimes, then lower rates. But I know Lorenzo and myself and, and my, and my staff are constantly keep an eye on this to make sure what we need to do, and if, if there's a case that, that we believe that, and talking to our, our financial advisors, we will do investments as we need to, to make sure we, we bring the money into the county that the county deserves. That's the, the quarterly investment report for June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you so much. It's a great report because of the interest rates and, and the surge there in, in dollars to this county, so appreciative of that, and just, it's worth noting that we had a very good investment policy. So while we get the Cliff Notes today, rest assured that we've spent several hours working behind closed doors, uh, with the Investment Policy Committee, and, and that's always, um, a very large committee, and, and our tax assessor is present, and county attorney is present, and, and it's just, uh, very helpful. So just wanted to say that, um, we need to approve this, uh, so I'll look for a motion. I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor of, of the quarterly investment report approval for June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay. At this time, I'm giving public notice that Commissioners' Court has elected to go into executive session as we can under the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. In accordance with this government code, Vernon's sections that are applicable are five-five-one, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-three, oh-seven-four, oh-seven-five, oh-seven-six, oh-eight-six, oh-eight-seven. I never thought I could memorize that so well. The Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys in matters of, including but not limited to litigation, delivering real property, prospective gifts, personal matters, including termination, county security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of such session, we will come back into open session, take any appropriate action as deemed necessary on items that have been discussed in executive session. It's one sixteen PM, and I'm gabbling us out.
The action on this.
I did, I'm opening it up at, uh, two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine.
Go ahead.
Close in memory? I want to close in memory. This is Dale's family member. Uh, his name is Francis Joseph Net, Nutell, eighty-eight, passed away in October twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen in Corpus Christi. Net joined United States Navy as a young, at the young age, uh, in nineteen sixty-seven, after serving twenty years while in the United States Navy. He had the opportunity to see the world. Net was a lifetime member of the Veterans of Foreign Legion Wars of the United States. Net, uh, then worked with the Corpus Christi Army Depot. Uh, after his retirement from CC, from the Corpus Christi Army Depot, Net enjoyed working, woodworking. He survived by his wife of sixty-three years, Joyce of Corpus Christi, and his sons Donald, Kenyon, Vicky, and Nutell of Corpus Christi, and their daughter Katrina, George, Nutell of Houston, and their children, grandchildren. Uh, visitation will be held from ten AM to twelve PM on Friday at the Seaside Memorial Park. The, um, owner, Robert Perez Mesa, passed away on October first. Robert worked for Neuchâts County Sheriff's Department for thirty-six years and retired on July thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. He was a member of the Fraternity Order of Police and had a passion for dancing, photography, and reading. Although, although he was also a proud Vietnam veteran, he will be missed, and prayers go out to the family. Deborah Ann Garza passed away on October the fifth. She was a past president of the longtime active member of the West Side Business Association, and also Secretary for the West Side Business Association, and she was a member and active member of the Cathedral Church. So prayers to the family also, and our condolences. John Joe Mishel passed away in October the seventh. He was a lifetime resident of Corpus Christi and worked with Citco for over thirty-five years. He sang and played with several known bands, Freddie Martinez, Tony LaRosa, Oscar Martinez, The Blue Satins, Agapito Zuniga, and Ray Ramos, just to name a few. He will be missed, and prayers to the family and condolences. Stacy Selby, Carroll High School volleyball head coach, passed away on October the tenth. She was also a special education teacher and department chair at Carroll. She also be missed, and prayers and condolences to the family. Tomas Di Cantu Junior, uh, who passed away in October twelfth, he was employed at the Goodwill Industries and CCISD. Our prayers go out to the family and our condolences.
Thank you so much, John. Mr. Modus?
Yes, I just have one. Elias Sedio, uh, passed away earlier this month, uh, resident of Robstown, and, um, I knew him and his family personally, and so just my condolences, uh, to the family in his passing. And, um, I know you'll read Mr. Commons and also for him as well.
Yes, I think all Commissioner Court members that knew Doug Commons are grieving, um, this week, and so on behalf of Brent and, uh, myself and John, who all had a relationship with the Commons family, I want to, um, express that Doug Commons, who was forty-nine, went to our Heavenly Father on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. He was a devoted father to his son Sean and his daughter Madeline, who we know as Maddie, his loving wife of twenty-eight years, Laura. He was a fireman for the Refinery Terminal Fire Company, otherwise known as RTFC. He was an incredible professional. He loved his work. He was a captain, so he was a great mentor to his fellow firefighters, and his leadership was truly second to none. He, um, had a public visitation last night at six fifteen, and when we were in court today, he was laid to rest, um, with his funeral mass being said at Saint Patrick's. He was an incredible advocate for the American Heart Association here in the Coastal Bend, and, um, we are just, we are devastated as Ray Texans and, um, kind of folks that, that knew, um, Laura through her real estate agency, and, um, I just have this great memory of him, um, cheering like crazy when Sean would catch a touchdown, or Maddie was cheering on the sidelines, and I've just always admired them from afar. It's just such a beautiful and loving family. And while I could not be there this morning, I hope the Commons family hears somehow through the grapevine that we are thinking of them, and we are praying for them, and we know that, um, he will surely be missed. With that, there are no other adjournments? Yes, we have one.
Judge, I would like to add my, my condolences to the Commons family as well. Also, um, Nolan Reed, uh, Nolan was Esther Reed's, um, husband, and, uh, he, uh, passed away, um, actually very recently. Um, Nolan, excuse me, his daughter and I, Maria, went to school together, graduated from Ray together, and, um, wanted to pass on the condolences to the Reed family.
I'm gonna echo that. Yes, Edward, you have one as well.
Uh, I don't know if Commissioners, if y'all had the chance to work with Steve Meeks. He was a longtime, uh, employee of the county. Worked over twenty, twenty-five years with us there at the Hilltop Community Center. He passed away October the fifteenth, and, uh, he was a good man, and, uh, we miss him.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm gonna adjourn us out. Oh, my goodness. So sorry, we did adjournments last, I mean, we upped adjournments. We have one item to take action on from executive session, and, um, I'll entertain a motion at this time regarding the negotiated class settlement, uh, in the opioid litigation. Is there a motion to be made?
I move that we opt out of the class action and, uh, go into the ourselves, uh, litigation for ourselves.
Is there a second for this motion? And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Thank you. All right, I think that concludes, everything else was a consult only in executive session.
Do I need to name the team of the attorneys or not?
No, I don't think so. I think, is that motion consistent with what you needed action on? He doesn't have to do anything else. Okay.
They're all on.